The meeting from on May, September seventeen, September seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. We opened the meeting at five P.M. Is anybody recording the meeting?
Free cam.
Anyone else recording the meeting this time? No? Okay. We've already entered into executive session. Going on the agenda at six P.M. is Board of Health variance of six Andre Ave. I'll turn it over to the Chair of the Board of Health.
Derek.
Presenting a variance for six Andre Ave. It's basic for just the variance for the distance on the overdig.
Yes.
Hi.
I have your name and...
My name is Rick Sharon, Engineer from Sharon Associates, representing Ann Cleary as the owner of the property at six Andre. And you can see on the plan that it's the house set up here. This is proposed existing as a subject tank in here and a couple of pits. And you see there's a well over here that's shared with the neighbor and they're less than a hundred feet away from one of these pits. So really the only area available to work on that gets together out a hundred feet away for the repair is over in this area between the deck and the shed. The problem is that we have an overdig. There was a lot of fill placed on this years ago. This goes back, I think, through the seventies, I believe, when this was developed and they placed about five feet of fill back in here. We were able to get perks down below that fill and then actually occur on material, which is what the system is sized upon. But we've got to replace that and normally there will be five feet on all sides. And if we do that, they're going to have to take some of the deck down, they're going to have to move the shed, put it back in, and it's already quite an expensive job as it is. So we've asked the variance on the overdig to reduce it. We still have five feet on the ends, but we're taking it down to two feet on the two sides of the system, right? The material that was back from the dam was nice gravelly material, right? However, the problem is that there's still a little layer of loam and subs soil down beneath. So we're going to still get down through that with the two-foot overdig on the sides and I think it'll work fine, but technically we need a variance in order to do that.
Derek.
I didn't have a problem with this.
Questions from the board? Questions? Do you have any questions?
The two-foot overdig versus five-foot, what's the impact on the system? Is there any impact on the system not having the same on this distributing area?
If this were, say, working in glacial tunnels or something of that nature, we have very, very tight soils and they have very limited per capability through the sides and all, I think I would say it might have an impact. But in this case here, it's working with the fill materials that were brought in, the gravelly materials. In fact, you might recall, you know, Grapple Bank had actually acted with us something a year ago. So it was nice materials, but again, it was placed on top of the old moment subs soil. So that's what triggers the need for...
Charlie, questions? Do you have the green card?
I don't think we had a notification requirement on this, did we?
I don't believe that there was.
There are no neighbors impacted. We're wasn't a hundred feet away from wells with the proposed design. We're ten feet off the property lines.
I didn't think that there was any of those on this one.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve as presented and in consultation with Derek, our Board of Health agent. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You guys are up. Can you state your name?
For the record, I'm Zager from Z and Consulting Engineers.
All right, David and Suzanne Ribeiro, Befford Water Department, Taunton Water Department, and Adam and Lori Disroche. Okay?
Yep. So we're here before you for a septic upgrade. We're located at six Point of Pines Road. It's an existing house, an existing septic system. There was no water supply on the property. They were basically drawing out of a pond, which was typical back in the day. So we're proposing a new well. We're proposing a new septic system. We're here before you. We were actually able to get away from all the wells, all the surrounding wells, including our new proposed well, except for one well located here on the Ribeiro property, which they were notified. That well was actually just a stand pipe from the ground and it's really not functioning. The Conservation Commission actually ordered them, excuse me, ordered them to remove it. But I still, because it's still in place at this point, I had to show it and ask for the local upgrade to it. We were able to, we were able to get fifty feet away from it, but there were guys, you know, who were climbing as a hundred. It is a vacant piece of property. It's actually an unbuildable piece of property. So the fact that there's a well on there is kind of, you know, it's a little strange to be honest with you, but they were ordered by Conservation to have it removed. So that's something that the board may want to look into a little bit more. It's only going to bring it up, only reason why I'm bringing it up. We are within a hundred feet of long pond. We're supposed, if this was a new, if this was a vacant piece of property, like the abutting property here, we wouldn't be able to put a septic system here. But because it's an existing house, like we always have on these upgrade situations, we're proposing a Presby system with an advanced treatment, fast zero-point-five treatment unit. So basically what happens is you have what comes out of the house, you have this treatment unit. So it's a septic tank, your typical concrete fifteen-hundred gallon septic tank with a baffle wall, and it has this treatment unit. And basically what this does is it aerates the effluent in there and it actually recycles it and recirculates it and it keeps recirculating, has a blower unit to aerate it. And basically what it does is, I don't want to call it drinking level because it's not by any means drinking level, but the idea is that it's much, much cleaner, much, much cleaner effluent than what you would get from a conventional system. So because of where we're at on the pond, which is a water supply, we feel as though that this is the best unit that we can come up with. There are other units, but as far as this one goes, this one's the easiest to install and easiest functioning one as well to me. So that's why we proposed it. We're also proposing a Presby system because the access right now is actually access easement pull-up. The abutting twenty-one, nineteen-point-of-pines road is an access easement. So the only way to come through and for Mr. Cabral to, the owner, to access his property is come here and the system, he has to drive over. So this system that we're proposing allows for vehicle usage, so vehicle travel. So as you can see, we're getting everything as far away from, as we came with ten feet off the property lines, a hundred feet from all the walls except for that abutting well, but we're within that setback to the water supply.
Questions?
Now, is there any danger of flood overflow issue?
From the pond?
From the pond, yes.
So the flood plain for the pond is here. This dark line?
All right.
That's the flood plain. That was all surveyed and it's elevation fifty-seven and we're up at elevation sixty-three-ish, sixty-four-ish. So we're significantly above it. And then, just so that, and I should have noted, I should have noted that this was approved by the Commission on this past week. So this was all signed up on by...
That was my question.
So what variance are you actually asking for? The setback from the pond and the setback for the well or just the setback from the pond?
Well, there's, all my variances are listed right here, so I can read them off for you. Right, they're right here. So I have, and actually there's a couple other ones and I apologize, but you, this is an existing, this, basically this is on a cinder blocks. So it's not really a foundation, there's no slab, so there's really not a setback, but I feel as though I should have, I should ask for it anyway. Typically from a slab, you're supposed to be ten feet, we're five feet. That's just to get everything, I wanted to keep it as far away from the property line as possible, so just so that I wouldn't notify, it wouldn't affect on the butter. So I'm five feet there. The next one is the setback to the water supply well, well that I was talking about from Mr. Ribeiro from a hundred feet to fifty feet. And then that, then it's also the setback to the, this is actually DEP variance because you're not supposed to, DEP allows you to go up to a hundred feet with a local upgrade. A variance allows you to go as close as need be. So that's why we're asking for the variance and that's why the notification for the brothers was required. And we also only were able to dig one hole because that, when you're out there, as you can imagine, it's very little room. We pretty much had no room to even sit the machine, so we sat the machine, dug a hole and that's it. So we only dug one hole instead of two and Derek was out there for that, so that was something that we agreed upon at the onsite. That's it.
To me.
How many guys?
Two.
Okay.
So there will be definitely a de-restruction.
Restriction. Okay. Questions? You all set?
All set.
All set? All right, do you have a motion?
Anybody?
Anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve as requested.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything?
Any questions?
Sign it out. Okay, next on the agenda is discuss approve articles for insertion of special town meeting. Warren.
I guess we'll take them in order of written. Article one to see if the town will vote to supplement the amount raised by the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund fiscal year nineteen, previously approved by the vote. Article thirteen of the annual town meeting, June fourth, two thousand and eighteen, continue to June fifth, two thousand and eighteen, by transferring fiscal year nineteen water sewer enterprise revenues for the sum of four thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars to be allocated to the general fund for the purpose of funding increased and indirect costs for previously appropriated in the omnibus budget by the vote taken under article one of the annual town meeting of June fourth, two thousand and eighteen, continue to June fifth, two thousand and eighteen, and or take any action relative there too. Is there anyone here from water? Any discussion on article one?
I'm good.
Article two to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of blank dollars and blank cents to support the personnel costs contained in the Board of Selectment Budget as appropriated in the omnibus budget by the vote of taken under article one of the annual town meeting of June fourth, two thousand and eighteen, continue to June fifth, two thousand and eighteen, for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, and or take any action relative there too, requires a majority vote. Any discussion on article two?
Do we have a dollar amount?
We don't really.
Do we have a dollar amount? We don't have any.
When are we going to have a dollar amount? We thought we did already.
Can we put that on?
What we talked about, right?
Yeah.
So in theory... Yeah, just let's get it done because I, I think we've all, in theory it's already there. I think it just needs that final.
Can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting, just a quick executive session so we can just nail it down, be done with it, if we have a number? Besides, is there any other discussion on article two?
No.
No.
Okay, article three to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds the sum of eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirteen cents to pay a bill from fiscal year eighteen from Republic Services LLC due to unexpected increase in cost of recycling collection and disposal and or take any action relative to there too, submitted by the, Derek, the Board of Health Agent, requires a nine tent vote.
Derek, you might as well sit up here because you're going to have a couple of...
You have a couple here.
This is basically coming from, you know, we didn't know what was happening with We Care and after that happened with, you know, just trying to get caught up with Republic. We obviously went over the budget for what we had planned on happening, so this is just to make up the costs.
For those of us that don't know what happened with We Care, can you explain what the situation is with We Care a little bit?
They were, what was happening was Republic would collect our trash and our recycling. The trash would go to Crapo Hill and so the recycling would go to We Care out in Taunton. We Care went out of business, just closed the doors on us. So we were kind of scrambling for a while and in the process Republic was collecting the recycling and disposing it, getting rid of it for us. We'll be talking about that a little bit more later, but that's kind of where the cost increase came from was, and the market and the contract that we had with We Care is not the market that we're dealing with today. So things have drastically changed and that's where the deficit came from in the budget.
And the contract we had with We Care, we, we, for those who don't know, we did attempt to go into maybe possibly litigation. We met with the attorneys to speak to litigation because they had a contract with us. So did most of the towns in this area because we're pretty much all in the same vote. They were the best business, best price in the area. So when they went under, for lack of a better word, it put all of us in the same hardship situation. So this arose not due to our negligence or your negligence, I should say, but because of unforeseen circumstances. And Republic did step up and pick up the recycling for us and didn't stop picking up the recycling.
Correct. Like we, there was no delay in the services at all, which there easily could have been because they didn't, there wasn't even like a week or two notice. It was just, they went to drop off the recycling and the gates were locked, so...
Actually, I first read about it in the newspaper, from Matt Place, was it Marion, one of the two towns?
The thing was Marion.
We started all kinds of nervous phone calls to see what was going on. Any other questions from the board in discussion on article three? Okay. Article four to see if the town will vote to raise and or appropriate and or transfer from available funds the sum of thirty, sixty thousand dollars to supplement fiscal year two thousand and nineteen operating budget for curbside trash and recycling and or take any action relative there too, submitted by Derek Macedo, Board of Health Agent. Assuming one has to do with the other.
Right, again, this all ties in when, you know, it was time to submit the budget. We, I really had no idea what the number was going to be, you know, where we were at as far as who was going to collect our recycling, how much it was going to cost. So it became extremely difficult to try to tie a number down as to what to budget on this. So I figured it was better to put in a number to just survive for a little while until I had a better idea and I come forward with a warrant to try to supplement that one.
Next year, don't do it that way?
It won't, it won't be that way next year.
Because the thing is that we have, as a town, have gotten away from supplementing budgets in the, in the spring, I mean, in the fall. We do all our budgets in the spring at our annual and then in the fall, we usually do all of our zoning changes and things like that, which I not. So it's better for you to give us a number that you feel is a legitimate number than trying to play catch-up in the fall. All right, thanks.
This happened pretty close to the annual town meeting.
I don't, I think it made it actually.
It was right around the same time, so... Okay, any other questions on article four?
No.
Article five to see if the town will vote to raise and or appropriate and or transfer from available funds the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to grind the brush pile at the transfer station and or take any erection relative there too.
This is my last one, I swear. This one, I actually just, I didn't realize the scope of the project. The brush pile that we have at the transfer station, I inherited a pretty big pile and it was there as something to do. And then once the March storms happened, the pile really increased, so it was now time to do something about it. The inspections on the landfill, they've always been good, but they'll mention, hey, you got to do something with the pile. I went and got estimates and I was way, way off on, I think I budgeted about five thousand for chipping and it's going to be more like twenty to twenty-five. So I, I just completely did not understand the scope of the work. So that's why I'm asking for the money on this one now.
That's a significant number, twenty-five thousand dollars to grind a brush.
Yeah, it's, it's chipping that can't be done with a chipper. I've been told from numerous people that I need a tub grinder and it would be a couple of days worth of work, about four days, and I've been told it's, you know, about four thousand to rent a tub grinder for a day.
Have you reached out into local, any local businesses that may have that?
I reached out a while ago.
I think Journeys has a tub grinder.
I had a couple of people come and visit me up at the transfer station. I didn't get any significant solid quotes. I was going to wait for, see how things went here, but I have had people come and give me some, some verbal estimates, which is where I'm coming up with that number.
So you're not actually confident in this number either?
I'm pretty confident in that number.
Five million, up to twenty-five thousand dollars worth of grain.
Well, it's, it was a significant pile.
How, how did we allow the pile to get that significant?
I inherited a pile and then I had other things that I was honestly more concerned about at the time than the brush pile. Then I had an inspection done. They said, hey, good job with the landfill, but we got to do something with the pile. So my focus started to change, all right, let's focus on the pile. The March storms happened and it almost doubled the size of the pile. So it, it kind of, it just snowballed on me.
And there's nobody that would want something like this, that chip a business or anything like that, that sells block mulch or any of that, they wouldn't want this stuff?
I didn't ask about that, if somebody would actually take it. I just figured it was our problem to get it chipped up and...
Is any of it of substantial size that could use for cordwood, for cordwood guys to come in here and try to take some of it to mitigate some of the...
We try not to really take big, big stuff like that, so I don't know if there's enough that would really pique an interest.
I think that if we're going to leave this on here, then I think that in the meantime, you need to hone in on that number and you need to call around and see if somebody will come and just grab it away because, I mean, we have a lot of businesses in town that might be able to just come and get it away. The third thing is, and I think we've had this conversation, how much, when we go to purchase equipment, I mean, is it better for us to take this twenty-five thousand dollars and purchase a piece of equipment in the, at the annual town meeting or, I mean...
You know what a grinder means?
Yeah, i- is it time for us to purchase our own thing so we don't have to go spend twenty-five thousand dollars on a person to come in and get it and bring it out or rent it or whatever? So I think we need to look at that too for the future.
I think with what we have now, we wouldn't be purchasing a piece of equipment that would do the job that we have now. But if we had a reasonable, reasonably large chipper, Derek, do you think it could be something that the employees presently have could keep up with? In other words, if we had a chipper, say we had our own chipper?
Bottom line, yes, we could make it work. We may have to change, you know, maybe how often we take brush, maybe we don't take brush every day that we're open to limit the amount of brush coming in so that we're never falling behind on it, that we always have time to keep up and to get it chipped. Yeah, it's something that probably could work. If we, if we had a chipper of the right size that could do the job.
Then we have to ask ourselves, is it worth it?
But we need to, we would need to get to a baseline first.
And we probably have to ask ourselves, is it worth it to increase employees' hours or get an employee in there that will do that?
These are different things that could be looked at, but yeah, it's something that could be done.
Where's most of this coming from? Is it coming from residents or is it coming from highway department?
I believe it's mostly coming from residents.
Zero from the highway department.
Thank you.
Derek, couldn't we do a control burn?
DEP will allow us...
Say that again, sorry.
DEP will not allow us to control burns on our landfills.
Okay.
Because it's a landfill or because of the material?
I think it's because it's a landfill.
Well, that makes sense. That being加上. Okay, any other discussion on article five?
No, but I, again, I'd like to see you either get rid of this totally by contacting some businesses to see if they'd be willing to come in and grab it and get it out of here. Maybe JM Mellow or, you know, Bernie or something like that, just because it's a lot of money and it, for me, it's, it's a wa, it's, I don't want to say it's wasted because we have to get rid of it, but it's something, it's a, it should have never happened, not because of you, but it never should have happened to get to this level, so, all right.
You're going to be able to firm down, try to firm down a number for town meeting four?
Yeah.
So that way we have the right, the right number. Any other discussion, Charlie, article five?
I'm good.
Is that, that your last one?
That's my last one.
Okay. Article six to see if the town will vote to raise and or, and appropriate and or transfer from available funds the sum of one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars to repave Bailey Road from approximately one-on-one Bailey Road, south Chipaway Road, and or take any action relative there too, submitted by Highway Surveyor, requires a majority vote. Chuck?
Yep.
You're up.
Pretty self-explanatory. We don't have the chapter ninety money to do it and I'm just bringing it forth. If you want to do it, fine, if you don't want to do it, okay.
What do you mean you don't have chapter ninety funds?
Chapter ninety money's already been allocated for the two drainage projects that we have out currently and has up to bid. GPI bid, the engineering, is seventy-two thousand dollars and it's up to bid now at the central register and I think David put it on Combs the other day.
No, it's going to be tomorrow.
Okay, so that's estimated at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that pretty much wipes out chapter ninety money.
I, my, my opinion would be then we have to wait here.
That's fine.
Me too.
Okay. How about article seven? To see if the, let me leave this for you. Article seven to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds the sum of eighty thousand dollars to pave Copacabana Road from Wings Corner, south, as far as there are houses, and or take any action relative there too. How far approximately is that?
Basically to the last house.
Mile, two miles, five miles?
No.
Half mile?
Hmm, three-quarters of a mile, half mile. We can't use chapter ninety money for that? Chapter ninety doesn't recognize that as a town accepted road, that section?
Because?
It never has been. It was always just a woods road. Chapter ninety, chapter ninety, chapter ninety accepts basically from High Street to South Main Street. The other way isn't recognized. They won't pay for it. If we, the town, pay to pave it, and once it's paved, we can then submit it to the chapter ninety roster. But we have to do that first.
If it's accepted through the planning board?
No.
Still wouldn't be.
No.
And there's frontage, people taking frontage off of it as a house is a public way.
Right. When the, when the town sold all that land and created, you know, the ones on, the house lots on Bell Rock and the house lots on Copacabana, you know, originally that lot of land sold, it was supposed to be one house lot, I think we've gotten six house lots out of it. We have to extend it a little bit further than what we originally were going to do because the descendants get built the house a little bit further up.
Is that going to require drainage, you know, street drains and all that?
No, no, we're just going to do kind of what we did like on Langrose, just pave it as wide as we can without encroaching upon it.
Yeah, Langrose taught him.
Yeah. But, you know, whether we do it this year or next year, you know, we also have an issue with, we don't want to use the grindings now from the yard, the asphalt buildings, that's what that road is made of. So now we don't have material to maintain that road. So we're looking at just paving from basically High Street to the very last house. We, but this was a article... We, but this was a article last year's town meeting.
Yeah, this town's money.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was defeated, so...
Any discussion on the article?
Yes, I have a couple of issues. First of all, it was, been defeated before, uh, less than two years ago. The other thing is, um, these people built homes on a dirt road. I'm, I'm curious if they're gonna, then if we were to pave it, they're gonna start to then complain about the traffic that now goes by their road and what speeds and so forth. Because I know that four-wheelers use that roadway. Um, and at the end, at the town line, it becomes totally deteriorated. And so then we'll have more traffic going up there. I, I, I would be opposed to putting this on the article, uh, the yellow mark.
Same.
Okay, my, my concern is less that where the other one still is qual- last article still is qualified for chapter ninety when chapter ninety money does come available, this one isn't. However, it was just defeated at town meeting. So to put it back on is probably gonna be the same result, so nothing's really changed.
Well, I get that, I just gotta ask for the residents to keep hounding me on a weekly basis.
I appreciate that.
My job.
Thank you.
You guys want more?
Uh, thank you, that one holds up. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and or, and appropriate and or transfer from available funds to sum of twelve thousand dollars to purchase and install a new auto lift at the town bond to replace a nineteen-eighty-six lift that is presently out of service, and or take any action relative thereto. Discussion on Article eight. Just what it says.
Just what it says, the lift is non-functioning, it's been decommissioned, uh, power's been cut. New lift, uh, the two prices I've gotten so far, uh, one was twelve thousand, I think the other one was seven thousand and change. Um, waiting for responses from, I don't know, but twelve is a high number. I'm hoping that it'd be lower. But with lifts, you get what you paid for. So we may get a, we're looking for a twelve-thousand-pound lift. The lift that's there now is seven thousand pounds, which will handle basically a police cruiser and that's it. But even the explorers, you're pushing that weight limit, so, um, I think that had a lot to do with the acceleration of that lift failing. Um, so again, this guy offers a twelve-thousand-pound lift, it's twelve thousand dollars. This guy offers a twelve-thousand-pound lift, it's seven thousand dollars. I have to study more what exactly the difference is. Cause there's cheap lifts that you can buy in Ocean State Job Lot that they're not worth the money. So, um, I feel comfortable with twelve thousand. We had two separate firms do the inspection, both basically can't do the same thing. The problem is, the companies that do the inspections are the same companies that sell the lifts. So it really wasn't a surprise to me that the lift failed because it's kind of a racket. Cause you call a company, they come in and inspect the lift, they charge you four-hundred fifty dollars and say, hey, we're gonna sell you a new one for twelve thousand pounds. So that's where we're at, you know, we're looking for twelve grand, hoping to spell, spend less, obviously. But, um, if you wanna cut it down to ten, that's fine.
Back in there, is that lift was thirty years old?
Yeah.
So I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, should this, excuse me, should this stay in where it is or should this go on capital? It is atta- permanently attached to the building, this could come out of capital stabilization.
Well, I don't see why, why would we draw it out of stabilization when you have free cash?
Well, well, right, but even more than that, um, when we do our capital budget at the end, it doesn't come out of capital stabilization.
Okay, it comes out of capital budget.
Comes out of our capital equipment. So it should be, had we have known it would've been in our capital equipment out of our regular budget, so not stabilization.
All right, so we'll just stay with free cash?
Yeah.
That's fine, me too. All right. Is that it for you? Article nine, to see if the town will vote, thank you. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds to sum of money for the purpose of finding and implementing the first-year costs of items contained in a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the town of Freetown and the Public Employees Union, Local one-one-four-four Launa, Freetown Public Safety Dispatches Union, covering the period of July twen- July first, two thousand eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and supplement the FYI nineteen, FY nineteen, two thousand nineteen annual operating budget. And the amounts and categories presented in the supplement schedules as on file with the town clerk, and or take any action relative thereto, submitted by the Board of Selectmen, Jeremy.
All set?
All set?
Good.
Yeah.
Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds to sum of money for the purpose of funding and implementing the first-year cost items contained in the three-year collective bargaining agreement between the town of Freetown and Public Employees Union, one-one-four-four Launa, Freetown Highway Union, Unit B, covering the period of July first, two thousand eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and to supplement the two thou- fiscal year two thousand nineteen annual operating budget. And the amounts and categories presented in the supplementary schedules as on file with the town clerk, and or take any action relative thereto, submitted by the Board of Selectmen, requires a majority vote.
All set.
Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds to sum of money for the purpose of funding and implementing the first-year cost items contained in a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the town of Freetown and Public Employees Union, Local one-one-four-four Launa, Freetown Town Hall, Unit A, covering the period of July first, two thousand eighteen and June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, I'm sorry, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and to supplement the fiscal year two thousand nineteen annual operating budget and the amounts and categories presented in the supplementary schedules as on file with the town clerk, and or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen, requires a majority vote. Uh, Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, uh, a sum of money for the purpose of funding and implementing the first-year con- costs items contained in a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the town of Freetown and Freetown Full-Time Firefighters Association, covering the periods of July first, two thousand eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and to supplement the fiscal year two thousand nineteen annual operating budget in the amount of, and categories presented in the supplementary schedules on file with the town clerk, and or take any action relative thereto, submitted by the Board of Selectmen, requires a majority vote.
All set.
Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and or appropriate, and or transfer from available funds to sum of money for the purpose of funding and implementing the first-year costs items contained in a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Freetown and the Police Association to, and to supplement the fiscal year two thousand nineteen annual operating budget in the amount of, in the amounts and categories presented in the supplementary schedules as on file with the town clerk, and or take any action relative thereto, submitted by the Board of Selectmen, requires a majority vote. Good vocalization.
Strike that.
Hmm? Well, strike, it's not good, right?
Yeah, it's not good, right?
Strike that.
Okay.
Uh, fourteen, to see if the town will vote to ra- to vote, see if the town will vote to accept as a public way the roadways known as Nick Drive, Cody Drive, Ethan Circle, Riley Circle, as heretofore to laid out on, by the Board of Selectmen and shown on the plan entitled As Built and Profile Plan of Nick Drive, Cody Drive, dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, and revised on June nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, prepared by Hanlon Land Surveying, Inc., a copy, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, and or eminent domain the fee of lesser interests in said roadway and any drainage utility, access and other easements relative thereto, and or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen, requires a majority vote.
All set?
Good.
Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and or transfer from available funds the sum of one thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of shredding one-hundred-and-twenty-one boxes of records approved for destruction by the supervisor of public records, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, as the final phase of the project for a new archival storage location, and or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by Kimberly Fales, town accountant, requires a majority vote.
All set.
Don't even have to talk, see that, is that nice?
I like that.
Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and or appro- appropriate and or transfer from available funds the sum of money to purchase equipment and supplies necessary to comply with the implementation of OSHA safety regulations requirements, which will require, which will go into effect February first, two thousand nineteen, and take any action relative thereto. I had a tough time with that. Uh, submitted by town administrator, requires a majority vote.
Do we have a dollar amount?
Uh, we do not have a dollar amount at this point. Uh, what, uh, I have a survey, um, coming tomorrow. Maya's coming out to do an engineer, not engineer, but a walkthrough survey of all the buildings to identify, uh, what is OSHA-appropriate things that need to be addressed. Uh, we had also discussed the possibility of allowing, uh, on some of the smaller items, possibly to do them out of the departmental budgets, uh, as well as maybe possibly some of the larger items, uh, coming out of the, uh, capital facilities if needed and basically shifting with the approval of the board, um, uh, some of those funds away from certain projects that may not require the full amount, uh, to pay for any larger items that may need to be purchased. So there's a possibility that we could withdraw the article if the board so desires.
Some things might be as minor as just putting up a sign, a piece of paper.
Right.
Some things might be more...
Some types of glasses, helmets, you know, uh, the storage containers, certain types of chemicals. Uh, I, I don't see them as big items, uh, ladders that are wooden ladders might have to be replaced with aluminum ladders, things like that.
For those who don't know, the town has been, well, all towns, all municipalities have been, um, OSHA exempt and that no longer is in effect as of, uh, February first, two thousand nineteen. All towns love to comply with OSHA, just like all private businesses. Um, so this gets us, to see where we need to have some focus put on and what we need to do to become OSHA compliant by our, our deadline.
We did survey our department hazards and they identified, you know, the hazards that they found within, um, their individual, uh, departments and buildings and, uh, um, I'm gonna be sharing that information tomorrow with the, uh, loss control representative from Maya to see, you know, specifically what she would recommend. So is it the desire of the board I can work within it or...
Well, my thing is, are we going like a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars? Are we going ten thousand dollars? We're going like, are we all over?
I think it's a smaller, I think it's a smaller number.
I, I, I would be fine to put off the spring town meeting, but unfortunately we're already, we're already past that deadline, so...
I, I think we should leave the article on, right?
And get the number.
We'll just have the number. Like, it might be that which are...
Find out what those items are and have a list and, um...
Yeah, because although we can't also say not to go over our certain, down our amount, so we don't know where we are.
We just wanna make sure we're compliant with the basic provisions. Everybody else set with that now?
Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds to sum of two thousand three-hundred-and-eighty dollars in no sense, representing the town's share of the FEMA's Assistance to Firefighters Grant to install a diesel exhaust removal system from Station Three, or take any action relative thereto, submitted by fire chief, requires a majority vote. Chief, you're up for the next few.
Yes, sir.
So what's, you have exhaust problems?
Yeah. We received a grant for forty-seven thousand dollars from the feds to install a diesel exhaust removal system from Station Three, that's the only full-time management station we have. That's our town share.
Do you have...
Right now, we have no system at all there. Basically, the diesel, anyone starts up, the diesel fumes go into the dayroom throughout the building, so we have to get it.
So you don't wanna sleep with carbon monoxide with your town?
No, I mean, I might, but the other guy...
Makes you sleep longer. Does the board have any questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Okay. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds to sum of X dollars for the purpose of designating, I'm sorry, designing and renovating the facade included but not limited to the overhead doors and the archways of Fire Station One located three Elm Street in the Sonora to accommodate marden-sized fire apparatus and any incidental and relative costs thereto, and or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by fire chief, requires a majority vote.
I don't know what you folks wanna do with this. I've...
We did get the engineer...
I thought by this time we'd have actual cost of what it would take to design to redo the front of that building.
We don't?
And we don't, we got, we got the, uh, the quote for the engineering study, the design.
And do we have that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, eighty-seven hundred fifty dollars.
Eighty-seven hundred dollars just to, to do the design?
That's just the design, do the study and it is what's our cost to do a building.
Well, I think that we should, go ahead.
David, uh, did you get any inkling from Andy on the total price?
He did not mention the total price until I spoke to him on Friday, no.
Um, when we spoke to him back in July, um, he, the assertion I, I drew from him was it'd be around a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so, and I...
I'm afraid I don't know what you should do.
We're all in trouble. Alexa would know.
Could've been worse, could've been worse.
Can I quote that?
You saw how fast I grabbed that all.
So I, I, I see what it just caught, the estimated cost of the design. Um, I, I, I like to see us with, you know, much stronger, uh, inclination of what the total cost is gonna be.
Can I, can I offer a suggestion?
I think we're, I think we're gonna get one even if we don't.
Yeah, we are.
No, what do you have?
So why don't we do, why don't we put in the money to do the feasibility part of this?
The eighty-seven hundred.
Right, and then, um, we have another town meeting coming up. Um, and then if we have that dollar amount, we can put it in at that town meeting and take it out of capital stabilization.
The only thing we wanna be cognizant of is we have to have this...
Right.
Done before we can order a fire.
I was just gonna ask him that, when do you expect him to order your next truck to fit that station?
We have to decide what, did it was, they determined whether...
Actually...
On your, on your normal, you said you have a cycle that you...
It's this year.
It's this year.
It's this year, nineteen or eighteen?
This year, eighteen.
Eighteen, so you, normally we've already went up to bid on this?
The money was approved at, at the end of, for the new engine for that station. So we're, we're holding off, waiting to see what happens with the others.
On the practical side of it, um, is there a problem with the, the engine you currently have in Station One? Is it functioning?
Right, now it's working, yeah, we drive some transmissions with it.
Twenty-five.
I know you were down for a while there, a couple of years earlier, you didn't have an engine in that station.
All right, it's twenty-five years old.
Yes, it's always age.
Twenty-five years old. That's Engine Two, the old A Two?
Yes.
Is twenty-five years?
That's right, we're getting old, yes.
Wait, it was brand new? Um, so...
The truck that replaced was brand new. That's how old I am.
Farrah? Yeah, real old, that's the one I was wanting.
Well, we, we can do the eighty-seven hundred dollars and do the engineering services and then wait for the other town meeting, or we can just put in a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars taken out of capital stabilization, but that's just shooting in the dark and that's...
I'd rather do the eighty-seven thousand, eighty-seven hundred.
Maybe, maybe in the next two weeks, we might be able to, um, the actual figure.
It depends if it needs to, to bid and all that stuff. If it needs to be bid, it's gonna have, it's gonna have the same process.
Right, exactly, that's, that's the issue. I, I've spoken to Andy about that too, and he's so cognizant.
We're up on thirty days right, less than thirty days right now to the town meeting, so if it goes through the whole bid process, it's gonna be a lot longer. I would, I, I, my, me personally, I'd rather see the eighty-seven hundred put in here and then, so we know exactly what we're going to town for.
Okay, and then when you say the next town meeting, I'm just, are you saying?
Which will probably be in November sometime.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's the one I mean.
Yeah, I, I just wouldn't make a...
Yeah, no, no, that's what I meant, I don't...
All right, I, I mean, I'm good with that, I mean, yes. So I'd like to see a solid figure that so we're not...
Okay. So let's, let's keep the eighty seven hundred in there.
So article eighteen, be amended to read for the engineering for the facade of station one in quotation, correct?
That's what that eighty seven is, number is?
That the, preparing all scope work for the bidding documents, and just gave schedules, scope A, scope B, scope C.
Mark's going to have to come up with a warning for that.
Okay. For eight thousand seven hundred dollars.
Eight thousand seven fifty.
Eight thousand seven fifty.
Is that coming out of capital stabilization or is that coming out of free cash? I would say capital stabilization.
Capital stabilization going to be?
I'm just wondering, because if we take it out of free cash, then it's, you know, it's just one, one turn. If you take it out of capital stabilization, whereas taking it out of capital stabilization, if we're theorizing, we're going to be able to put, I think we're going to be able to put a large sum of money into capital stabilization from free cash, so why don't we just take it out of free cash first?
The difference between the two is the vote. One requires a majority vote, one requires a two thirds vote.
So we take it out of, free cash is majority vote, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think we should be taking it out of free cash.
To see if the town will vote to ra, article nineteen, I'm sorry. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available sum funds, the sum of seven thousand, seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and no cents, representing the town sheriff FEMA staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant, safer grant, for the purpose of supplementing the personnel budget for the fire department to hire two additional firefighter paramedics and/or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by fire chief Gary Sylvia, requires a majority vote. Safer grant, tell us about it.
Well, we ordered a safer grant to hire two additional firefighters that notice, basically safer grant, people, federal government pick up the salaries and benefits of these two firefighters, seventy-five percent for the first year, seventy-five percent for the second year, and thirty-five percent for the third year.
Thirty-five percent, the third you said?
Yeah. And the town assumes sole responsibility of fire, credit that and better.
And how long do they have to stay employed after the safer grant?
There is no, no requirement, you can let go after three months.
Questions from the board?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. When, it's not part of this, but when are you expecting to deploy them? What shifts, what times?
We have to, we have a hundred and eighty days for equipment to get hired. They're going to be on the job by January twenty-sixth of two thousand nineteen.
So pre-quick.
Yeah.
And there will be an academy available for that.
Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote, oh, you're done.
I guess I'm done.
To see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under article eighteen of the annual town meeting of June fourth, two thousand eighteen, authorizing board of selectmen to enter into a tax exempt lease, purchase T E L P to acquire police cruisers by striking out the words Ford Motor Company LLC there, therefrom, and inserting in its place thereof the following words, All American Investment Group LLC, and/or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by Colton E. Abbott, chief of police, requires a majority vote.
Sounds like a lawyer wrote this.
So basically, at the time we wrote the article, Ford, we believe Ford was financing a number of different vehicles. Let's say for almost two decades, we were involved in leasing vehicles and Ford was providing the financing. Recently, when I called Ford, they told me they had changed their policy and they will no longer finance for any non-Ford vehicles. So consequently, you had to look to All American, which is financing most of the town's vehicles.
Okay. So basically, this is housekeeping, just because you can't lease through Ford unless you buy a Ford.
Yes.
I'm okay.
Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds to sum of twenty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of a new or used vehicle, for u, you're done, for use of the council on aging and/or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by council on aging board, requires majority vote. Thanks, Jake.
Council on aging. Come on down.
Let's go.
Janet, you are representing the council on aging?
Yes, I am.
Can you please just?
Janet, since though, chairperson, council on aging.
Perfect, great job.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions on article twenty-one?
Yes. What, what is the condition of the car now?
The PT Cruiser is almost non-functional. It was in the garage for two weeks, they couldn't find out what was going on with it because it has no DC. We're always more or less without it than with it. There's always something wrong with it. Chuck, okay, has taken it several times to get over to see if it could be fixed, different parts, and it's just non-functional far as anymore.
They can't locate the parts for that we need, and they have, excuse the expression, can you read some of it, so that it is usual, no usable, but the parts for it, they don't make the car anymore, and you just can't find the parts for it.
The way it is now, there are some seniors that are really afraid of the lift in the van, to the point that almost anxiety, getting lifted into the van. That's why we need a vehicle. We need a vehicle that they can easily step into.
What else do you use it for for September?
Strictly to, to transport seniors to doctor's appointments, shop, food shopping, anything that fits the seniors.
So you don't use the van anymore?
We do. We, we still do, especially if we have a wheelchair person, that has some point.
So how long have you known that you've needed a car?
Oh, over a year.
So why didn't Barbara or why didn't anybody put it in for the annual town meeting when we do our purchases of, of vehicles?
Well, we just tried to keep it going, save money. It's just not working out.
Right.
See, I have an issue that twenty-five thousand dollars isn't going to do what I think, and I'm kind of away from this, but I'm, I'm thinking that more that you would want something like a, for lack of a better term, I would use a caravan type vehicle than a, you know, a sit-in, because then you could put more people in and you could also move around a little bit quicker or easier. And I don't see twenty-five thousand dollars doing it, and I kind of have a problem buying something used, as they say. Yeah, neither do I. And I'm thinking that the, the parts issue, I, I think if they went to a dealer, they're going to, they're going to find the parts because they still have, that's, that's a neon chassis, so they, not only PT pots, are they able to use PT pots on it, but they can use neon pots on it and so forth. So I, I really think that we should go into doing a little bit of planning on what type of the vehicle we're really going to buy. Maybe I'm bringing up at another town meeting.
It has to be a vehicle that the senior can step into easily.
Right.
Your SUVs?
No. But I'm, what I'm.
Some of your vans are very high. If I can get into them, then it's okay.
Yeah, I'm just seeing.
But we also want something too low that you can't get out of either, so it's not something that's appropriate.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think it needs a little bit further study myself.
Would you want to transport in a, a machine that all of a sudden stops for no reason?
Well, I think we've got to get to the bottom of what the, the problem with the vehicle is.
Even aftermarket parts are not available.
Well, I, I kind of.
I don't.
I, I don't know. I kind of have a problem with that because you see neons out, out in the road, you see PT cruisers out in the road. I don't, I don't know what this part issue is, but the vehicle needs to be replaced.
Definitely does.
That's, that's, that's a given, but how, what were, were I, you know, going to purchase, not just for, you know, one, one item, but for use by a spectrum of people. And I, I say, I throw out the van idea because I, I think you could put more people in it. I think it's.
Now you're talking thirty-eight thousand, forty thousand.
Right, but, but I don't think, I don't think twenty-five thousand dollars is going to get you, get you what you want, and I don't think we can afford more than that right now, but if we wait until the annual town meeting, I think we can probably double this price and get you the vehicle that you really need, not to last you for another year or two with a used car or a twenty-five thousand dollar car, but one that's going to last you for a good eight years or so.
Okay, so what do we do in the meantime with PT Cruisers that isn't working? So.
They don't work, but then we try to find parts.
Yeah, try to fix it. I, I, I know that there's parts out there that PT, that are good for PT Cruisers. I mean, you see PT Cruisers.
Do you know the outlets?
Well, I would say probably you start with Chrysler, you know.
I don't want to shortchange you, twenty-five thousand dollars is not enough. I really think you need a brand new car, one that's going to last a long time.
Well, that's what my question is going to be, where'd you go with the number twenty-five thousand? Is that just a generic number, or do you actually have a model in a vehicle in mind?
We're, we're kind of like playing around with possibly a Camry. Easy, it's easy to get in and out of. It probably has most of the features that are required, good working AC system, all-wheel drive or something like that.
Yeah, you need it to be safe, you need, yeah.
Well, that's where I was getting to.
Four door.
It, it would be more, for me, more beneficial if you came and said, we're looking for XYZ car, it costs this, this is how much we can get it for through, whether it's available through state bid, maybe the chief can help you figure out if something's available through state bid that fits what your need is, and is both economical for the town, but also will last you the next, to Lisa's point, eight years. Not to say this is an arbitrary twenty, none of the twenty-five thousand, then when you start going shopping, it's not enough, or you can't get what you want, so you end up in a car you really don't want, it's because that's the number.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? I'd rather see you get what you need than just an arbitrary number and.
Or we were being conservative with the money because we know that, yeah.
Unfortunately, twenty-five thousand doesn't buy much anymore. That's a sad state that we live in.
Yeah.
You know?
You need something that's going to be doable for a long time, and one that, that you're all comfortable driving and getting in and out of.
And one that doesn't take a lot of money to repair.
Right.
Right, maybe something that's more commonplace, not something that's like that, that PT Cruiser, they made it a couple of years and it went away, it wasn't.
It's gone.
Right. Maybe something like, like a solid car that's been around forever and will be around forever. Jake, is there any chance of helping them?
Yeah, we have a couple of.
A whole state bid process?
Yeah, Chevrolet models and Ford models, yes. I can get them both of those books to look at.
And it might be fit the bill and you might even get more, because we negotiate, you know, we, the state negotiates with those cars, you might actually be able to get more cars for the same money and get a, a better fit than just arbitrarily picking a vehicle and saying we like this.
That doesn't continue to sweep up and down.
Right, and maybe something, like you said, something domestic that we can get parts for because it's me right here in America, it's not.
So you are, will not be entertaining this one?
It's, it's the board's prerogative here, but.
I think at this meeting, you know, why are we spending money that if we give them the, you get the twenty-five thousand dollars and then you can't buy a vehicle for that money, then you're going to have to come back.
They can't, can't even come back.
Right, they, right, you can't even come back, you have to come back with a whole new item.
And it might be better that it's a lease option like we do with the other departments, so it might end up not even being purchased, it might be a lease.
I think that you'd need to investigate a little bit more.
Which if you did a lease, then you would be, just like the police department gets new cars periodically, so you wouldn't have to come back, it would be part of a lease program, so a little bit, you know, a little bit would come out of our budget, not your budget, and you'd be able to get a car more often.
Yeah, or be five, whatever the lease terms are, you would turn over and get a new car instead of.
So I think you should talk, sit down with the chief and also with the town administrator and come up with a plan, and I think we'll be ready for the annual town meeting and get you what you need.
Okay.
Something that is going to last for a while.
Okay, so I have a Toyota and I'm, I bought it in two thousand and five, no bigger cars.
I think that's perfect.
Yeah.
But meanwhile, what do we tell our seniors when they have to go to the doctor, when the old cars aren't running today, so you'll have to wait, you know what I mean?
We need to get that fixed.
Yes.
And if we can't get it fixed, then that's something we'll have to address in another meeting, but we need to obviously have that functioning now, and if, if it has to be some kind of gap measure that we have to come up with between now and then, you know, the June meeting, then that's something we'll have to discuss and come up with, whether that's a rental situation, whether that's some kind of, you know, borrowing from the town, whatever we have to do, we'll have to come up with, because we, obviously, we want to service the seniors the best we can, and I think that's.
Too hard of us around.
But it's more, I want to do it right, I don't want to just do it because we have to do it, I want to do it right and make sure it's done, you know, not something you have to worry about in the future.
We do have a Camry now that was Scott's when he was here, and it isn't being used as much now, obviously, for a periodic basis, you know, for a month or so, I think we could help out with that, because of the problem with the PT Cruiser and/or look at a short-term alternative.
Yeah, that'll buy us a month, you know, to try to figure out if we need parts or if we can get parts, or come up with a plan B.
Because it was in the garage for two weeks and.
Well, currently, our garage doesn't have a lift, so we just found out today, so hopefully we have that fixed too.
You know.
But getting a van is scary. If you, you yourself or anybody wants to try it, we'll put it, put you on the lift, and you will see, it is really scary.
Many wheelchair lifts, I know.
Yeah, a lot of people are very afraid of.
They're liable to somebody fall.
Yeah, I, I know the situation, my, my mother-in-law likes to take the van, and they used to have to have her stand on the thing and go in, and it's not an ideal situation.
No, it's not.
So.
Now, this is what we're looking for, because our seniors deserve more than what they got.
Yep.
They do.
And that's why that twenty-five thousand dollars isn't going to get you what you really need.
The problem was that we can't transport people because they're afraid to get on the lift is a, is a good example of what didn't happen when they bought the van that they bought, that's, that's my point, you know, you got to, if you, you can't just go out and buy a vehicle without thinking about what you're using it for, and that's why I think it's happened in the past.
Wake up that van through some deal with the state.
Of pretty, yeah, it was great.
It's actually.
Yep.
And another thing with the van is it can't maneuver in a lot of the streets because of their width and the height and.
Public ways, it should be maneuverable, public ways.
That's why we got it, because there's places in Fall River, if they can't get it in under the.
Doctor's offices, shaming the other.
Yeah, primary care, they can't get it in and out of there.
There is an ambulance entrance, you should be able to use the ambulance entrance and have access, because the ambulances are a lot bigger and wider than the, I drove one for many years.
Yeah, but the way a, a van works is we drop off an individual and they have to get to the doctor's office.
Right.
Now with an ambulance, parking.
I'm just talking with parking, to get access to the buildings, those medical buildings, they, there, there's a lot more to offer, to get to hire. They, there is a lot more to offer to get the higher vehicles.
Some of the seniors that we transport are very frail.
Yeah. Well, you do a wonderful job and that's not, don't take this wrong from the board. We want to make sure you're getting what you need, not just fitting an arbitrary number. And that's.
So you wouldn't entertain a lease?
Absolutely.
Yep. I think that might be your best bet.
That's why I said it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I hope we get something.
Yeah, well, like David said, that other car is available now. Talk to him tomorrow, yeah.
But is the car currently on service right now?
Uh, I don't believe so right now, you know. It's running, but.
Okay. Barbara calls us two or three times, which is out on the road or he's out on the road. But the van, the car's doing this. Oh, it's making a weird noise or, you know, it's a constant thing going on.
Yeah, and you don't want to be worried about that if you know.
No breakdowns and do you have to maintain if it's mail there?
All right, so David, can you get in touch with Barbara tomorrow? All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you ladies. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Article twenty-two to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of one thousand E two dollars and fifty cents in the water sewer enterprise fund for the purpose of paying prior, two prior fiscal years bills to be funded from the certified retaining earnings of the water sewer enterprise fund and/or taking action relative there to submitted by the water and sewer commissions requires nine tenths vote. Any discussion or questions on that article?
Well, I, we're appropriating.
No, it says from retained, certified retained earnings.
From their own earnings.
Should the word actually be appropriated or should be transferring?
No, they're appropriating from their own budget, so.
It, it, it has recertified retained earnings, so it's not going to general fund. As long as it's not coming from general fund.
Yeah, all right. All right, I understand that.
There's no actual transfer because it's within the enterprise fund itself.
Yeah, okay, no.
Go ahead.
Good to know.
Yes.
Article twenty-three, yeah. Did you snuff them up? Article twenty-three to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars in the water sewer enterprise fund for the purpose of increasing the expense budget previously voted under article thirteen of the annual town meeting on June fourth, two thousand and eighteen, and continued to June fifth, two thousand and eighteen, to be funded from the certified retained earnings of the water and sewer enterprise fund and/or take any action relative there to submitted by water commissioners, requires a majority vote. Same thing, it's from retained, certified retained earnings.
Yeah, I'm all set.
I'll say.
Um, one thing to note though on the chief's article. It only mentions June fourth, two thousand and eighteen. It doesn't say continue to June fifth like the rest of them, which is the article twenty, so I think the wording should be checked on that to make sure it's. If you look at article ten, twenty, it says article eighteen of the annual town meeting of June fourth, two thousand and eighteen. It doesn't say anything about being continued to June fifth, two thousand and eighteen, just.
Oh, the lawyer took that?
Yeah, redlined the rest, adopted by the vote.
Yeah, he took it out.
Because technically on June fourth, he did nothing. We just continued to June fifth. Can you have, can you check on that? Thank you. Sorry, I know, but just to be consistent with everything else on here, it should be. Article twenty-four to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate indoor transfer from available funds to the sum of one thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars, twenty-four cents to pay vendor for the printing. Try that again. Yeah, one thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars, twenty-four cents to pay for the vendor for printing and mailing informational flyer for the Free Town Finance Committee to all home, Free Town homes submitted by petition. Article twenty, we can't do anything to that anymore.
Right.
Article twenty-five to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Free Town Protective Bylaws, Article eleven zoning bylaws, section eleven point two six C, adult retirement community, restrictions lot size area by adding the sentence, the minimum acreage for an ARC development shall be not less than five acres for properties that are serviced by water, municipal water and/or sewer and/or take any action relative there to submitted by planning board, requires a two-thirds vote. Chris, I'm down.
Please announce. I am Chris McKay from, uh, planning technician.
Thank you. All right, currently it is what, ten acres?
Yeah.
And we're looking to reduce the size to five acres if they have water and, and/or sewer. It opens up the possibility for an adult retirement community and takes away the, because it's such a large piece of property, it makes it more feasible that somebody can actually try to put in a retirement community. Any questions?
No, I'm fine.
Article twenty-six to see if the town will vote to amend the Free Town Protective Bylaws, Article eleven zoning bylaws by changing eleven point one eight H one, Table of Use Regulations to allow trucks by special permit in the Science and Technology Overly District and/or take any action relative there to special town meeting October fifth. See proposed addition to the Table of Use Regulations below, special town meeting October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, seven P M. Did I miss something? I'm sorry, I'm reading the heading. In the Table of Use, it shows a Table of Use and the S T O D, the Science and Technology Overly District, currently is an N for no, and it will be changed to an S P for special permit. Submitted by the planning board requires a two-thirds vote. Any questions on the article? When we originally discussed the truck stop issue, um, we, as the planning board, I'm saying, had this in the, as a special permit in the Science and Technology area. Unfortunately, went through all of the iterations, it got dropped. So we put the definition in, put all that stuff in, but we didn't put it in the Science and Technology Overly District. It's away from town. It pulls truck, traffic out of the center of town and away to the periphery, right where there's highway ramps to get them on and off and get them away from clogging up downtown Main Street areas. So that was one of the, the thought processes behind the special, the, um, planning board. Chris, if you can, you can speak to that if any questions come up.
I, I don't have a problem putting it on the board. I do personally have a problem. That's my personal problem. I don't have a problem putting it on the board, but I would say, why would we do it?
The idea is to get it away from the center of town.
I, I get that.
Because there is going to be stuff down the center of town that, that's going to try to, that's going to track the truck traffic and make it a nightmare down Main Street, so. Any other questions concerned?
The only thing is the comment over here, so that I do not have the rest of the text of the new bylaw.
That's article twenty-seven. Okay. Now, article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to amend Article eleven, section eleven point one eight of its prospective bylaws relative zoning districts by inserting a new section, eleven point one E dot F and a half, a Sonnet Bay shores, A B S O D, a Sonnet Bay shores overly district as on file with the town clerk's office at the town of Free Town, three North Main Street, the Sonnet Mass, and/or take any action relative there to. The comment by the attorney is he didn't have that on. I spoke, actually, I don't know if you are privy to this, but I spoke to the planning board chair today. This article's kind of, was put together, um, between him and Mr. McHugh, um, trying to come up with some, there's a situation that's up there. Because most of the houses up there are undersized, most of the land up there is undersized. Pretty much everything they do on their property is special perm, they need a variance for. Because lot sizes in town of seventy thousand square feet, a hundred and seventy foot frontage, up there, everything's ten thousand square foot lots. So they're non-conforming right off the bat. But after discussion with him today, we have not met as a board and discussed this article. We have a public hearing scheduled for next Tuesday. But the time to take and digest what we get from the public hearing and change all this, this text really won't be, won't be a great idea for this, this meeting. So we wouldn't, he wouldn't be objective to putting this off till the spring town meeting so we can have our public hearings, come up with our determination, our being the planning board, the Senate board, and have a, a better grip on this. And it may be more of, more inclusive of other areas in town that we have a similar problem, so.
All righty.
So we're going to strike that?
We're going to strike that, but we are keeping on the public hearing for next Tuesday on the planning board. Um, so anybody wants to come down and give their two cents on that, we, I'd really appreciate it so we can get a better grasp of that. Article twenty-eight to see if the town will vote to amend the Free, the town of Free Town zoning map accordance with the list of changes as on file with the town clerk's office at the town hall, three North Main Street, the Sonnet Mass, and/or take any action relative there to. Mr. McKay, you can speak to that.
Mike was going to. The town was going to ask, because it was the Conservation Commission that actually proposed it.
Okay.
To the planning board.
Okay.
Couple of years ago, the map was updated after the state forest, I think, had bought some land. Conservation Commission had acquired some land. There were changes over to open space. That was in twenty sixteen, I think. Again, the Conservation Commission in the last few years has acquired eight parcels. The state has acquired about twenty-eight. A lot of that was the land they purchased from the Rosendies family north of Chase Road. So in the interest of keeping the zoning map accurate, somebody comes in and they want to see what land is available for development. The idea was again to update it, throw more of this land that's been put into a conservation status into the open space zone. Most of it right now, especially over here, is in the general zone. It looks like it can be developed. A developer comes in, sees twenty, forty, eighty acre parcels that look like they can be built, and they can't anymore because they've been bought up by the state or, or donated to the Conservation Commission. There were a few other things on the list that, again, I would expect during the planning board hearing, they may be altered or removed altogether. If not, they go through, and those were just some instances where some property lines had changed in the last couple of years. And a lot that used to be entirely within one zone was now split in some percentage by more than one zone when that wasn't intended to be. So as an example, there was one property on High Street that a fellow that had land that was in the village residential zone bought a wedge that was forty feet wide at its widest point to increase its frontage and I think something to do with a well. That was in residential zone. So now that one lot is in both zones, and it's just to tidy some things up that are like that. But I would expect the planning board will really meet that out next week and get down to what it should be to go forward.
In the public hearings on Tuesday, also put that in there.
So will this be ready?
This will be ready, yes. Yeah. This is actually just, um, like Mike just said, it's just changing a lot of the town. There's a bunch of the land that's been donated to the Conservation Commission. It just makes it open space, uh, zone and open space.
Okay.
That was article twenty-eight, twenty, uh, article, last article. And that's just the house cleaning to see if the town will vote to transfer some of money from free cash to capital stabilization account if the account in the amount of, until we have the numbers, we won't know that, and the stabilization in the amount of, and/or take any action relative there to. So that's it. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too.
So the number of monetary articles is one fifty-six, one forty-four? Did you, you didn't add them? I did. Except for we don't know what highway, I mean, we don't know what the contracts are and we don't know the ocean number either.
Correct. And I do have some estimates in my spreadsheet, so my number is higher.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You do have funding to do what you want to do.
Got it. Thank you.
Oh, um, there was also discussion. I had unfortunately missed the last meeting. And there was two articles put forward here that are in your packet. I don't know if the board wants to open the warrant and accept these two articles or not. That's at the pleasure of the board. The first article, article is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate indoor transfer from available funds to the sum of two thousand dollars to supplement a five thousand dollar equipment grant received by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Highway and Safety Division for the purchase of an accident reconstruction computer and hardware to collect accident scene data and reconstruct the, the accident submitted by the police chief with prior two-thirds vote. That's one. The other one was, um, to see if the town would vote to raise and appropriate indoor transfer from available funds to the sum of, for the purpose of installing a new communications tower for the, the police and fire department, said purchase to include engineering and/or technical services and the communications tower, installation of communications tower and radio internal and external radio equipment and other equipment necessary to make radio service fully operational within the town, Free Town, and take any action relative there to. Um, this would be a majority vote. What this would be is, um, this is something we're actually in the building committee side of it. As your other chair, you know, it's something we have currently in, with the building committee, but it's something also that we need, whether the building, the police station passes or not. We have the free cash. Instead of just supplementing the capital stabilization budget, we could put it into this directly.
May I make a suggestion?
That's why I would.
Thank you. Second thought.
Because I am kind of a little, uh, you know, afraid because it were, one thing they were, they were submitted after the deadline, so are they.
Well, we could open, close the, the meetings up.
Right.
The, the.
Just with the fact that it's the deadline, why don't we put it up until November? The other thing is, is that, um, especially the radio issue would be something that we're going to address in November anyways. We do it anyways, so.
The only thing difference is you're talking if we put in capital stations, so two-thirds vote to get it out versus a majority vote if it's already in free cash.
But here, all right, I, I agree with, with Charlie. Um, we already had a deadline. This sets such a bad precedent, especially if it's, especially if one of us brings it forward. Like, it just sets a bad precedent. We are the ones that make the deadlines and all of a sudden we're going to bring something forward. That's my, that's number one. Number two is, it is part of the package of the police station. That being said, I do believe that it's an important thing, a huge thing that we need to address, and this doesn't address it correctly, in my opinion. It goes back to like the car issue. Uh, uh, it's twenty-five thousand dollars. We have no amount. It goes back to the fire department when they want to put the new garage door in. Like, they have to do a feasibility or an engineering services, so we don't even know what that is. And it's already part of the police package right now.
I thought we had that number for the police currently. We have, we went, we sent that out and got a number for that. How much it's going to cost to put that tower?
Where are we going to put it? If we don't have the police station, it may have to be all redone again. Because if the police station doesn't pass, where are we going to put the new tower? Are we going to put the new tower next to the school and hope that we get a police station one day? Or are we going to put the new tower back where the old tower is and go into the same problems that we already have because of the, of the lay of the land over there? I, I don't know. Those are, those would be questions, like, we have the engineering for the new tower and the new proposed police station, but that might change if we have to move the tower somewhere else.
True. That's true. Yeah, I, I think it's best to put it off until November.
Could we, could we separate them in November? I mean, I don't know. Though, that would be a question I have to ask Andy about. I, I have no idea.
Yeah.
But I just feel like we've been on this road, going down, traveling down this road and all of a sudden this, this was a curveball, sort of.
I, I think it'd probably be best to put off until November. We can, we can have a little bit of a strategy there in November, you know, either, either or type.
Right. Um, I'll make a motion to approve, um, the warrant with our, um, changes.
Uh, I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Both of those are down, as we have this packet here. Uh, any more, any discussion on that hearing, and all in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda. Discuss creation of Clean Energy Community Committee with resident Wendy Grasha. Wendy, please go on up. Since I just said your name.
Wendy Grasha. Good. Looking to propose formation of a committee, um, not necessarily under the same name that you just mentioned. That was, that was our initial discussion, but we've broadened the, the goals and the scope of what we would like it to achieve. So I've actually put together some packets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
F C C A, I like that.
So, renamed to Free Town Clean Community Advocates. As you can see, the mission statement would be to develop educational tools, partnerships and conservation programs which will help the Town of Free Town restore, protect, and preserve the community's natural resources, landscape and wildlife, thereby cultivating a healthier environment and more sustainable, cost-efficient way of life for all of its inhabitants. The membership, the committee would be comprised of approximately seven members. Too many hands in the jar can make it too complicated. Consisting of town officials and local residents who wish to volunteer their knowledge, time and efforts towards achieving a clean, healthy and local living environment and experience for all citizens in the community. And as a start, some action item ideas on the table were to take actions towards achieving the green community status for the, for the town, which I'll go into a little bit more after. Network and develop partnerships with other like-minded groups of communities to learn ways we can continue to cultivate and foster a truly clean, healthy environment, promote healthy practices and programs, such as eliminating standing water, responsible waste reduction and disposal, mass saves energy efficiency programs, educating the public on, on those types of things. Develop educational education programs within the community, such as, for example, an agriculture, an agricultural exchange program, like providing composting kits and developing a community garden and kind of doing an exchange program or something like that. And then other ideas as developed embedded to town officials and residents. The idea is to make it a broad, a broad mission overall, so that a lot of things can follow under this, so that any residents who are interested in serving and volunteering and committing to just becoming informed and, and learning ways that they can make changes in their own personal lives and then share that with other people within the community and, and thereby cultivating a, a better sense of community, but also a cleaner community overall. Everybody knows that my focus generally is on energy and energy efficiency, sustainability, clean energy. I've agreed that I would serve on this, on this committee, and that would be my focus, would be on the energy. And as part of that would be achieving the green community status with the, with the Green Community Program. In the pages after that, it discusses why that's a benefit, why that's a huge benefit. There's a lot of funding to be tapped into to be able to achieve a lot of those things. We've touched on with the town administrator about a lot of those different options and opportunities, and there's, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars to be tapped into for the purposes of transitioning a lot of our old aging equipment in municipal buildings and streetlights and things like that into cleaner, longer-lasting, more efficient sources for the benefit of the community, but also the residents, because when you reduce those bills, there's more money to be spent on things that the community can use. And so, in the pages following, it, it gives us more detail about what the, what the steps would be in achieving that, but that's something that I would be working on with the town administrator and officials. And I have a lot of networks and, and other, other groups, so I'm able to get a lot of resources that way. And so, there are towns that have already been designated as green communities, which just around here is a cushion at Lakeville and Dartmouth. So, also in there, there's, there's information about the, the program itself, and then there's also information about what Dartmouth, the Town of Dartmouth has already accomplished and done. And then there's a page also in there just about composting, useful composting programs and how simple that is. And it's something that if we develop an educational kind of sub, sub-program of this, we can teach residents in the area, especially the ones that are highly eager and enthusiastic about agriculture. We can teach them how to reduce the waste, which saves the, the town money, but also saves them money, and then they would be able to maybe even put that towards a community garden. We have plenty of people in this area who would love to be gardening, and a community garden would be a great way to reuse that compost that the residents make. We provide those kits to them, they provide the compost. We, we, you know, cultivate the gardens, and then they're able to reap the benefits of that by getting fruits and vegetables from their local community garden. There's also other potential benefits to that, where you could have the community garden hosted somewhere near the schools. And then the, the children in the schools could be part of that program as well, and learning about agriculture and, and fresh fruits and vegetables and harvesting those things themselves. It could be something that a high school does as part of a, there's a lot of, a lot of kids that need community service hours. They can be involved in the program as well. So, the, the broad scope of this committee, why, why I chose and really would like to push for it to be broader is so that it'll attract more people who want to get involved, because it's about incentivizing ideas and being creative and getting involved. And if you have it just focused on one thing, then, you know, the incentive, motivation to be involved is lessened. And so, there's a lot of people in this community who care about the community and who care, but have different skills and different knowledge and different, different connections in other communities, so they can bring different things to the table. And so, we were even talking about, David and I were talking about, you know, if we were to magically get more than seven volunteers, then we could potentially create some committees for the different issues that they want to address. And, and it would be based on, you know, people's availability and their commitment, their level of commitment, what they're available to do. And the good news is, I'm not asking for anything. I'm not asking for money. This is, this would be strictly volunteer-led, and if anything, the hope is to actually bring in money. So, it's kind of a rainer.
Well, now, right to farm town, so that may have passed the town meeting, so that would help with the composting and getting the materials. Is there anything for brush?
Yeah.
Buddy, that's something that somebody serving on the committee could, you know, everybody's tapped. And, you know, their plates are full. This is something that somebody who has the time and wants to learn more about something that is a problem. For instance, the recycling issue that we have, you know what, if you reduce, the, doing a compost program can reduce the waste by forty percent in the landfill, right there. You know what I'm saying? So, if you get somebody who cares enough to look into the information and figure out how other places are doing this and bring it back to the table and find out what's feasible, and there's grants and stuff to be, to be wanted, stuff like that, too, for those incentive programs.
And take care of site and something to that effect.
Right. I, I mean, it's worth giving it a shot. It's, there's nothing to lose in, in the idea.
Kay, good luck.
Thanks.
No.
Done, yeah. Any discussion from the board?
I think it's a good thing to look into, you know. I like to read up.
Yeah, I want to read it, too.
Absolutely want to read that.
Get back to you, but I, I don't see it, I don't see a problem with that. Yes, if we can reduce our footprint, having footprint, anything we have.
Right, and I, we can put this on the website, so people can, maybe with your contact information or, you know, David's, and then through, through David to you and find out, you know, you can get some people to volunteer that way. I'm sure you're gonna do an outreach as well. I'm sure you have a network of people that you're gonna tap into.
We were talking about issuing some kind of a press release so that the town would know, but this is something that's a startup and see if anybody was interested in participating.
I, I would welcome you to do something at town meeting and have like a little.
Handle.
Handout or something, so people, you know, can ask you questions about it, so I'm, I'm open to all of that.
You, you have seven members. Is there a specific breakdown you're thinking of?
Well, we want it to be a combination of residents as well as officials from the town, so that they can be part of the decision-making processes. Like, you know, we don't want to have seven residents going off on a tangent and having the town.
With no support.
Spend all that time doing that and have the town say, that's not feasible. Okay, I'm so glad we spent an hour figuring that, you know. And the lay-in would be important. I mean, it needs to be a collaborative effort.
How often do you expect to meet?
I would think maybe once a month.
Once a month.
Yeah.
Okay. And you're thinking maybe two, three town members, officials versus maybe five or six, or five or four residents?
Personally, I'd rather see more residents than town officials.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree, too. And.
Because I look at this as a grassroots.
No, I totally agree.
Is there any specific person you'd like to see on your board?
No, I actually think that the more diverse, the more well-rounded the group is, the better, because everybody comes from different walks of life, perspectives and different experiences. And I think we have a whole bunch of people the same mindset as me and thought processes as me. It's limiting.
Right. But you're talking to someone, you're already sold to the, you've preached it to the choir. I already have gone all solo. My whole house is LED. I'm switching everything over, so.
Same. I mean.
It's nice never to get electric bill again.
One of the things that's, that's an example, a great example would be promoting Mass Saves program, because so many people have no idea that even exists. And then you've got the language barriers of some of the, the people in, in the town who can't even understand the English or, you know. So, taking the time and, and translating the materials, and maybe even developing our own materials to be able to go door to door and hand out, should we, you know, encounter somebody who there's a language barrier with, here you go, and find out. Because some of them, they might be kind of freaked out about the idea of somebody coming in their house and doing an audit. I can't say that I blame them. But the amount of money it's gonna save you, the benefit to yourself, your, your bill, your environment.
Free light bulbs.
Free light bulbs, free shower heads, free, well.
Things that will last a long time.
Depending on the thermostat you put in, maybe.
I worked in the Mass Save program for three years. I did those audits for three years all over Massachusetts, so.
And it's amazing how the lack of outreach there is.
Ever free town, surprisingly, never free town.
It's amazing what a lack of outreach there is for that program. So, and people are paying for it. We're paying for that.
Comes out of your electric.
As part of our bill. So, people should be informed of it. That's just one small drop in the bucket of all of the.
So, the way Mass Save works is, there's a, there's a tax that's, it's not technically a tax, but there's a tax on the electric bill that goes to offsetting energy projects. And they use that funds, they tap into that funds. It's only available for towns, municipalities that contribute into that, if you're.
Baver Source, National Grid, Columbia Gas.
Yeah, don't go there.
No T M L P, no, no municipal lighting plant, none of those, they don't contribute, so they're not. But early boil and furnace replacement programs, refrigerator.
Bait.
Programs.
Products, yeah.
And they, there's also zero percent interest loans for seven years, twenty-five thousand dollar loans that you can get to offset stuff. So, it's really a great program.
It is.
Whether, no matter, even if you don't look at this, go to masssave.com, it's a great program.
And what the green.
As my plug, my public service and.
Status, you can do furnaces and buildings.
Absolutely.
Do lighting and buildings. You can do the LED for lighting program. I had a really great discussion today with two people who served that about that.
And, and we talked about the five steps, and the town has already started working on some of those five steps already, just in the actions that they already.
They gave me more insight into that also, because they're actually working.
They actually assist you with it.
Three or four, yeah, three or four other communities that are going through the process right now.
Right.
In this ton of grant money available, but, you know, we just gotta get the status. The big thing is the, the tight house regulation. They said that's the big one, that people, and that's a matter of education, teaching people, you know, that it's only on new houses. It actually, it's like six to seven hundred dollars on the cost of the house.
Right. That's, that's one of the things that scare people off, is that if you were to adopt a policy that states that all new buildings had to comply with some of the green energy requirements. A lot of people freak out thinking, well, it's gonna, that's gonna draw, drive people away. They're not gonna want to build here. But if they're made aware of the fact that overall, the, the actual cost of that ends up being somewhere between seven fifty and twelve hundred dollars, and then you have the baits, and then the tax savings, and then the amount of money you save on your, on your energy going forward pays itself back.
So, just so you're both well, well aware of this, this came up at town meeting, I want to say, six or seven years ago, and it was defeated. So, you want to, might, you might want to keep that in mind because of that very reason.
With stretch code.
Stretch code, yeah.
Yeah, you just really need to.
They said that that's the biggest.
Educate, educate, yeah. It, it failed that town meeting, so.
Yeah, when any, anytime you mannequin, especially in town.
It's actually.
But when you do things that promote, like, you want to collect, you have a place where you can collect compost, that's a great idea, and it's something we all can use. So, you mean, that's a voluntary thing, and that would work, and I, I would love to do that, too. So, you know, I think those things, but when you try to push mannequin, that's when you're gonna hit a wall.
Well, that's part of those five steps of becoming a green community. Is that the only focus of this committee? No, it's not. But that's, that would be part of the focus as the, as the energy part of it that I would be working on. And so, we'd be working on educating the public on the, on what's real, what's factual, what's truthful, and not what's supposed, what's feared.
Sounds good?
Okay.
George, you wanna have a motion to create the committee?
Why don't we read through this whole packet first?
Thank you, bring it back.
And then we'll bring it back to the next meeting of the next scheduled meeting, which is the October first one. We can intelligently discuss it after we read it back.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Approved, signed, road opening permit for one forty-one South Main Street. Anybody here to speak on that? Are you playing the coup?
No.
You look at me like.
We're just moving.
Yeah.
Taking things out of, okay. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the opening permit, opening permit for one forty-one South Main Street.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved traffic plan for St. Bernard's Harvest Festival on September twenty-first through twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, submitted by Chief of Police Carlton Abbott. Chief, you're up again.
Okay, so, the only difference between what is going to happen and what you have in front of you is Santander Bank has agreed with the church to provide parking down there, so the shuttle will run along South Main Street to that bank as well. Because of pedestrian traffic, shuttle and parking on High Street, we're recommending that High Street be one-way from South Main Street up to Alexandria Drive. I've spoken with the fire chief. That should, should not present any problems for EMS or, or fire.
Is, would that, would they be exempt from that? Would they be police and fire?
Well, I think we can follow the one-way.
Is there any issue with Alexandria Drive using them as a primary route?
I, I don't see why not.
Can't be worse than what they're going through now.
I'll make a motion that we approve the traffic plan for the harvest festival, September twenty-one through twenty-third.
And you'll be there?
I will be there. I was there already.
Stay awake, Charlie.
Yes.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss bill submitted by.
If I could interrupt for a minute, maybe we could move on to.
You just call me Mr. Moderator.
Oh, I did, didn't I?
Mr. Chairman.
You want to take out orders? Which one do you want to discuss?
How about we go to Republic? These people have been here.
Absolutely. Discuss Republic. I'm gonna take, use the chairman's prerogative and take this, the discussion with Republic contract extension out of order. Thank you for coming up. Can you please.
Brian Penny, Operations Manager, Public Services Department, Division.
Gilven Oster, General Manager, Public Services Department.
Welcome back. And boss Derek Seedorf. Since it is the Board of Health, Madam Chair of the Board of Health.
Start.
Well, we've had numerous, numerous discussions about Republic, where we were, where we're at now. The purpose of tonight is to talk about signing into the two-year extension. We've been given some information on what it would take on the recycling side as a supplement to the two-year extension. Republic has been doing a good job of really taking the complaints down to a minimum. We just recently went through a stretch where, I think we went two and a half weeks where we didn't get any complaints at all. Not even like a, a basic, you know, they missed my battle complaint. And I think just the way that the recycling market is right now, I think it's in the best interest of us to, to really look at the extension. I think it, it just covers us for two years. It gives us some stability in a very unstable market. That, that's my opinion on where we're at.
They've actually put together a plan in order to continue to allow us to recycle at certain costs that are, and giving us a mechanism by which to do that. You might want to explain that a little bit for girls.
Long story short, essentially, and we've kind of gone over this before, is the market is in disarray for recycling. And what we've been doing is, we've been receiving in the tons and transloading and shipping it out to the processing facilities out of our, our division in Far River. Capacity is getting tighter and tighter, and it's a struggle for us, because a lot of these facilities only want the contracted tons. And right now, we don't have contracted tons with you. We've been trying to tuck it in everywhere we can in order to continue to service. What we're looking to do is, is extend the contract, have the tons contracted, and tie that in with our capacity we currently have. My fear is, with the market being as unstable as it is, at some point, all of the contracted tons are gonna end up in these facilities, because they're struggling, and I think, did you receive that, Catherine Mercer, from our D P, the new letter, as to what the guidelines are gonna be?
Yes.
The towns? And the expectation is that we're gonna clean up the recycling and get it to a certain level where we truly have a viable product. And the expectation is that we're gonna clean up the recycling and get it to a certain level where we truly have a viable product. That's a process. Um, if we, if we started rejecting everything that isn't completely one-hundred percent acceptable, the phone calls would be through the roof. So, we're not there yet, but that's the ultimate goal down the road, which is something we'll have to work through. What I'm looking to do with, especially with our driver, is identify the worst of the worst. We are rejecting now when, when stuff's really bad, but there's a lot of stuff that we're letting go. Um, right now, it's still about twenty percent of the recycling stream is contaminated. It just ends up in, in the trash in the end, even after it gets processed. They're looking to get us down somewhere around five percent. That is going to be a struggle. But again, that's where they're gonna turn around at some point and say, we're only gonna take the materials that were contracted to take in the cleanest of the materials. That's why this helps us, cause if we're tied up into a contract, these are contracted tons, a- as you can imagine, that takes precedence over any uncontracted tons. I feel like a lot of the issues that are really of a concern for the board, I feel like we have fixed. Uh, my relationship with Derek's great. Anytime anything comes up, we keep him informed all the time, even something as simple as we run a co-collect truck out here in town. So, that picks up one side of the truck's trash, one side of recycling. When that breaks down, we're limited on our backups to that truck. So, now it's have to put two trucks out here. So, I always notify in advance, just in case I need calls, just to let you know, we have two trucks out there. We have one truck picking up trash, one truck picking up recycling. Cause as you know, if a resident is used to seeing that one truck come by and pick up their trash recycling, and then all of a sudden the recycling gets left behind, or the trash gets left behind, they're calling. Um, so, I, I feel like it's been a good partnership, to, to Derek's point. Um, the, the missed pickups, the things of issues of the past, I feel like we've stomped out. I, I think we're heading in the right direction, and I'm looking at this as a long-term thing. I'm, I'm hoping after, even if you extend it for two years, that you would consider us again even after two years, because the service has been that consistent. And that we, we're always trying to do what's in the best interest of both parties.
So, I know you, you said that, you know, you've been trying to take care of problems. Um, I was just away for a short time, and during my vacation, I got a nice picture sent from a resident, and there was garbage all over the ground. So, um, yeah, and he was not at all happy. So, I think that there are still some issues that really do need to be addressed, and here's a picture of it, so, you know.
Okay.
Okay.
Did they, did they call in?
Uh, he just texted me and let me know what was going on. I was away, so.
Okay.
Um, I didn't get back to the town administrator or Derek about it. Um, I just got back, so, anyway. So, there are some.
As of recent?
This was just on Thursday, okay? So, so we didn't go too long of a stretch without getting, um, a complaint. Um, I.
Well, a complaint, they gotta call them to the office.
Right. Um, but, so I do think that there are still some areas that need to be improved upon. Um, I have not sat down with you, so I'm just listening to Derek and to the town administrator, um, you know, on what their recommendations are. I still have some, some questions. Um, you know, recycling right now may be up against a wall, but, uh, just, there was a recent article the other day that there are other countries, other than China, that are starting to take up, take in recyclables. So, is this a long-term process? Is this gonna be turning around in another year from now? You know, I don't know, but there are other countries that are stepping up to the plate and taking our recyclables, so, um, uh, there's a lot of food for thought.
I'll be honest with you. I've, you know, I've been in this business thirty-one years. I've never seen anything like this before. Uh, this happened in the late nineties, as I had mentioned here, last time I was in here, and the market was well, quarter the size it is now. And China's always been that outlet. It was supposed to legislate in programs, essentially create a new market for material. If other countries are taking it, it's, I, I don't feel like this is gonna correct itself in six months, a year, even, maybe even a year and a half, two years. Um, that's something, again, at the end of, if you extend this contract, at the end of two years, if there's better opportunities out there, again, we'd absolutely encourage you to exercise those.
So, the way I look at it is, yes, you, you have helped us out tremendously, and, but if we didn't have this problem, would we still be, would we still be talking about extending our contract? I'm not really sure about that. I know that you've been trying, but again, like, you know, I just, another issue, you know what I'm saying, so.
Well, I think we're trying to be a partner. I think, you know, when, when the tough got tough, and within a day or hours of we care shutting the doors. We kinda stepped right in and said, hey, we'll, we'll help you out. We'll take it without even a question. And I think that is what we were trying to achieve as far as a partnership, you know, for a long-term solution.
In, in any of these one-offs, when you have something like this, when you have a situation like this, if it gets communicated back to us, it gets addressed. Um, and it's, again, there's always gonna be teaching that goes on. I feel the drive we have out there now is, like, is better than the drive we had previously. I think Charlie, that was the, that was the drive of that, you had to turn over. Uh, the drive we have out there now is great kid, does a great job, um, takes a lot of pride in his work, and, and I think he's a lifer. I think he's gonna be with us for a long time. And he's out there by himself. This is his contract. Yeah.
Personally, I've seen a, a much better response, uh, in probably the last eight months. Um, you know, and you didn't, you inherited this problem, and I understand that.
There was a tough meeting in January.
Yeah, and, 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 um, so, I mean, there's always gonna be issues that are gonna need to be addressed, and, um, you know, we have to understand that. I'm more inclined now than I was in January to extend the contract. I, I will say that, my own experiences and knowledge, what, what was happening. And I, I know that it's gonna be a big problem with the fact that you're going to have to start to, uh, reject anything that's, that's not clean recyclables. And that in a lot of these communities, they're going around in there, if they see something that's not, and they're not even picking up the barrel, they're, they're rejecting the whole barrel. So, it, it's, it, it's a, it's an issue, it's a mindset we have in, in the United States that, you know, we're just gonna do whatever we want, you know. We're, we're lazy. We're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna clean out a container. We just throw it in there. It, half the time, it's not recyclable, whatever. So, I, I mean, you, you've, you've begun to, to win my support, okay? I, I will, I will say that.
And you were a pretty harsh critic in January.
Yes, I was, yes.
And a lot of the decision, and again, a lot of it was deservedly so, I mean.
Right.
We had some failures.
I mean, today, there was an envelope in the batter, in my recycling, but I, I, I understand that, no. It, no, but that, the problem of, you know, dumping and not having it, I mean, as I drive along my own street, I don't, no longer do I see where there's a trail of, of waste. You know that they're, okay, the truck's been by because there's a trail of waste. That, that hadn't happened at all. Yeah, I, I would say last six or eight months. To your, you know, you've done a good job in my opinion.
Thank you.
That's cause I know where you live.
I, I, I'll like, echo Charlie's sentiments, I, sentiments. I, I believe the same thing, that you've done a much better job, um, the last eight months or so than when you did the first year and a half of the contract. Not you personally, I mean, Republic. Unfortunately, I haven't seen any of these contract proposals. I haven't seen what the, I know you've said some numbers, but I haven't actually seen the, the per-ton numbers for the recycling and all that. So, I'd like to, before I say any too much, I'd like to see the numbers and see what actually the proposals are, uh, and I haven't gotten that yet. So, that would come through the Board, the Board of Health. Um, but totally, I can say that I can't speak intelligently. But I, I do congratulate you. You're doing a much better job.
Thank you.
So, next steps are?
Well, put it on, we can get you the materials that you need, and we can put it on the agenda. We did send a memo with some information regarding that. I, I thought we had sent the actual amendment with.
Yeah, I think Chris.
Privacy, have you seen?
No.
Yeah, just a feeling on that part.
I haven't seen it. So, I'd, I'd like to see that before, and obviously through your chair. So, at some point, if you guys sit down and hash it all, I'll come back to us.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you very much, though. I, I, I do appreciate the job you've been doing.
Oh, no, no problem. And, and again, it's, we're, we're trying to be as best a partner as we can for the town, and like I told you, I, I live down here now. Best thing I want, cause I didn't even decide to figure it out now, you know.
Just first, listen, I've had the same issues with Charlie. Yes, Charlie has, I haven't seen it. Before, if something fell out of the, the bag, it stayed there. He wouldn't just pick it up and throw it away. Obviously, there's a trash bag there, something, maybe an animal picked something out of it. You throw that in with the rest of it, but if it wasn't in a green bag before, it didn't go in the truck, and it ended up blowing all around the neighborhood. And then I have to call Derek and yell at Derek, and then he would call whomever and yell at them, and, and the other thing was that the customer complaints were, a big issue was, the one-eight-hundred number was sending to Arizona that had. They, they didn't know where we are. They didn't know what we're talking about, and there was some frustration there, so.
Yeah, we do have, we do have some work to do in our C F C number. Um, just to give you an idea, kinda how it works, it's a customer resource center and a centralized customer service within a handful of locations around the country. Um, it's not perfect. It's still fairly new. They're still working the bugs out of that. Um, you know, I'm a big proponent of localizing it. It brings accountability. You know, if somebody's in my building, you know, they can walk downstairs and ask a question. It's tough if they're, you know, nine states away. Uh, but they are, so they are, that process is improving. Um, but yeah, it's, there's some bugs with that as well.
My mother's seventy-five years old. She hates to talk to, to people on the phone that don't know what she's talking about, and I'm down here in Elm Street or something, and they're like, who? Where? Wait, you don't know what the hell you're talking about, Clay. You know, that's the, and that's, those are serious issues, you know?
Yep.
Well, if we're performing a hundred percent of what we commit to on a daily basis, then you won't have any.
You don't have those phone calls, right, absolutely.
And that's kind of where.
And our complaints have gone down.
And even something like that, i- if you communicated it to Derek, I would've went out immediately and addressed it with the driver and asked him. I mean, that's kinda what our, our process is. You know, if there's mistakes or something happens, it's about making the driver hyper-aware of his surroundings, cause it could be something like that. He has papers out as he drives away, blows out of the hopper. And if he doesn't notice it right away, then you're getting a text from, from unhappy residents saying, hey, there's papers on my street. You know, is this guy just throwing his stuff around everywhere? Um, whereas, again, if that's communicated, Derek could follow up on it, mitigate the issue going forward.
About communication.
All right.
The, just as a point of admission, the contractual prices on the two additional years are, were set with the original.
Yeah, cause, cause.
Contract. That's basically it.
Right, remember, the variable for you guys essentially right now is, is the recycling.
It's recycling.
Cause we don't know where that market goes. If, if, to your point, if all of a sudden, they come in, they say, we're gonna be able to now ship out to six or seven different countries, and they're gonna process it. As the market rate, as the market rate goes down, the market rate view goes down. Um, do I ever think we're gonna see what you saw at three, thirty bucks a ton a week here? I, I, I'd be shocked, but I, I'm hoping that eventually we'll get some normalization of the market. Right now, it's just not there, but our, our costs are fixed through the next two years of extension. Since we don't own the material, you own the trash, you have a, you have a deal with, with Prapor Hill for the trash, you own the recycling. Right now, but it's been, we've been just taking the material.
Right, you're a hole.
So, if, if you came and said, hey, we got a location that's willing to take it, can we work something out in order for you to truck it to this place, you'd absolutely sit down and go, whatever, yeah. Cause at the end of the day, it's, we want to be the most cost-effective approach, cause you have to answer for it. You know, I'm sure people are gonna say, how'd you go from, from thirty dollars a ton to up to almost a hundred dollars a ton on this material? And some people aren't even aware that, that the market's crashed.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting.
It's okay.
Hey, discuss bill submitted by Finance Committee for Deval Printing. I feel like we've done this before. Has there been a change of heart from the Board?
Well, I, I think, in my opinion, it's the, why I was so opposed to paying it originally, and which hasn't really changed, is. I, I think that the process of incurring the bill, uh, has major issues in which we have to address. And that is that the Finance Committee took the money from the reserve fund, which, um, is for emergency or unforeseen, um, circumstances. And though they didn't know about, when they formulated the budget, they didn't know about this specific incident or meeting. Um, the chairman spoke to it, to that issue at, uh, at an earlier town meeting, and, and he addressed, he, he spoke about that. So, there, there was, there was the opportunity in, in a way to put the funds in the budget. That being said, um, I don't think that, you know, this person that they contracted with should be stiffed because of someone's, oh, decision that comes, comes into question. Um, so, I, I'd like to address it with the Board, the Finance Committee. Uh, and I, I wonder if we, the Finance Committee having a budget is a little, a bit of question to me, because who checks, where's the check and balance? There, there's supposed to be a check and balance. I, I think that maybe the, uh, work that, uh, the Finance Committee may have for, for say, a, a clerk or a secretary. Might be better off put to another office, so that they don't have to, they don't have to have a budget, and they don't have to, uh, have this issue where there's a check and balance. That's, uh, like I said, I would, I would like to sit down with them, have a, an ex, a, a good explanation and a good give and take about, uh, how we do about, going about this. But the idea of taking it from the reserve fund, there's supposed to be the check and balance on the reserve fund, and now they're taking this. What, what if somebody said, oh, I have unforeseen expenditure, uh, something happened, what we'll say, a department head has the opportunity to purchase a piece of equipment at, uh, a re- a reduced, um, rate, but he wasn't gonna replace it for a couple of years, but now he can replace it at a reduced rate. Is he gonna be able to go, is that an unforeseen? Well, it's unplanned, but it's not unforeseen.
Well, in that situation, it's supposed to go to the Board of Selectmen. We're supposed to send it to the, the Finance Committee. The problem is, when the Finance Committee originates itself, it doesn't have to go to the Board of Selectmen. It can just go to itself and approve it.
Or, or, you know, this, this department head is kinda, you know, chummy with the, the Finance Committee, you know, and they say, all right, yeah, that's fine. Uh, and that's, that's, that was my issue originally. I mean, it's nothing to do with the fact, you know, the, the, what was printed. It's, it's the nature of the transfer. I, I have a lot of, a lot of problems with that. But that being said, I would make a motion that we do pay the bill, because unfortunately, it wasn't incurred. And this is, you know, I don't think that the person they contracted with should suffer the, the, the cause, the, the outcome of a political decision.
You can't be the banker and have the keys to the bank at the same time. All right, that's, that's just ridiculous.
Can we get a second, then we'll do the discussion?
I'll second it.
Motion being seconded, and now for discussion.
You can't be the bank and have the bank keys to the vault at the same time. It just doesn't make no rhyme or reason. So, next time, it's gonna be, what, a five thousand dollar? We're gonna do, we're gonna send out a booklet now for the police station. We're gonna send out a booklet of the way we wanna see things done. Uh, and that's, and they're not gonna come to us. They're gonna go right to their own bank. I mean, this is, this is the craziness of it all. I agree. All right, I don't wanna, I don't want Deval Printing to go down, but there's gonna be a lesson here. There's gonna be some sort of, uh, repercussion, or some sort of letter sent to them saying, this is not how we do. They're the ones, the first people in line that'll say, nope, it's not unforeseen. We're not gonna give you the money. I mean, they're the first person that says, so, I, I don't know, I just feel like it is just a craziness, craziness to me, just nuts.
And this was my opinion at the last meeting. I don't wanna hold Deval Printing. They're just a small business that's trying to do business like everybody else in the world. They took this on good faith. They put the money out. They did the thing, the work, and they're expected to be paid. My issue is the same as both of your issues. It's, but it lies with the Finance Committee. It doesn't lie with Deval Printing. And by not paying the bill, we're punishing Deval Printing. We're not punishing the Finance Committee. So, that was my issue with the last time, and that's why I voted in the negative last time, because in my. Because in my opinion, this is punishing Deval Printing, not the Finance Committee. If you wanna sanction the Finance Committee in some way, which we can't really do, they're elected officials, but if you wanna just bring them in, discuss it with them, and come up with something with them, that, that's fine with me. I just don't, I personally still don't, as I, and I didn't at the last meeting, think that Deval Printing should be the one that we, you know... Unfortunately, from political infighting amongst departments, is the one that bears the burden here. I, I, I didn't think it was right then, I don't think it's right now.
I, I, I think that whether it is in addition to a bylaw, an initial bylaw, or a ruling of...
From DOR.
From DOR, whatever it might be.
Absolutely.
I don't think that, that the Finance Committee should be incurring bills because as it is, you know, we're... There's no check and balance.
Right.
And I, I see, that's an issue, I, I don't know, I kind of think that, you know, it was danced, it was danced around a little bit by counsel, but I, as I read it, of course, you, you read things to your viewpoint, he was saying that he had a question. And maybe getting a ruling from the Department of Revenue might be a good idea, also maybe a bylaw. And I, I, I have a problem with the Finance Committee having a budget. We, we can, there's, the, the amount of work that's there, somewhere we could put some, we could find, either within our own office or something like that, instead of them having a clerk that they have to pay and so forth.
Well, we can't change that until next year, but I think that that's definitely something we look at for annual town meeting to change. And I think that we need to, we need to contact DOR.
It's probably, and this is probably, the, a budget probably has died in the last twenty years.
So we...
I'm trying to put, because I know that engine one's twenty-five years old, so.
So right now on the table is a motion made in second to pay Deval Printing the sum of money that's outstanding. Why don't we entertain that first, and then if you wanted to make a second motion as to referring the matter to DOR, then we'll, we'll do that in, in order.
Yeah, all right.
So I'm, I'm calling the vote on Deval, paying Deval Printing as proposed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you wanna?
Yeah, I, I wanna see, I, I think...
Do DOR in council?
Yeah, why don't we go to Department of Revenue first, they're free.
With, through town council?
Yeah, well, you know...
You don't need to go through town council to go to DOR for a ruling. You don't need to go through town council to get a ruling from DOR.
But to articulate our position, we might wanna articulate through town council.
Correct.
That's up to you, unless somebody wants to drop the articulation letter and...
Hey, you could probably drop an articulation letter.
All right, so can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion to write a letter to DOR to articulate our issue here in...
For the bill submitted by Finance Committee.
For bill, or a transfer from, oh, the reserve fund to the Finance Committee, if that's...
Specifically for that bill though, that, that bill for the Finance Committee, correct? Because that's what's on the agenda.
Well, well, yeah, well, this is the, the, the bill is the basis for our asking the ruling.
Yes.
I don't think it's...
I, I think the ruling should be...
It's not in general, but it's, it's specific to this bill because this is what triggered it at this point. And then in, in future, we'll have a ruling, so we'll know how to trigger it.
I think the question is, can the Finance Committee transfer...
All right, here's my issue, if it's not to do with this agenda, then we'll have to put it on a separate agenda and put it on a separate meeting. If it's specifically for this bill, because this agenda to discuss is the bill submitted by the Finance Committee. So if it's for this bill specifically, I think it would be okay to go on this agenda. If it's not for this bill and you want a general ruling, then I think we need to put it on a different meeting and not have it voted on this.
I, I think this is a, this is a, the ruling is a outcome of our discussion on this, on this bill.
I think we can do both, I think we can make a motion and do that, and then also, so we can move this forward. But I think that we can reiterate our, our vote on, I think that's what Mark said we could do, as long as we put it on a future agenda item. Because otherwise, we have a discussion about something, and we can never, we can never make a decision because...
Well, my, my problems with discussing a bill submitted by the Finance Committee is all we have on the agenda. So as long as it's related to that, I think we're in the clear. But if we're looking to something totally separate, just to go to the DOR to see if the Finance Committee can withdraw from its own general, its own reserve fund, I don't think that pertains to this article, this agenda item.
But I, I think it does, I think the, the outcome of our discussion on this agenda item is a request of DOR to make a clarification on whether the Finance Committee can draw from the reserve fund.
That's a real reason why we said that we didn't wanna pay it in the beginning. So now we're saying, all right, we'll pay it, but there's a question of how they got the money, and is that legal?
Correct.
So I think that we need to have clarification from DOR of, is, is that legal?
And I agree with you on all of those points. My, my point only is, if we're talking about this bill, I think we can do it right now, tonight. If we're talking about just a general, can they access money from the general, the, the reserve fund for any reason, for anything, I don't think that would fall under this agenda. And we would have to go on a future agenda, which might be next Monday.
I would think that if, if DOR rules that this is illegal, and they shouldn't have done it, then it's gonna be for any other bill going forward.
Correct.
No matter what, so it doesn't really matter.
Correct, and that's what I was trying to say, if, if it's for this bill, in which will, when we get a ruling, they'll say, you can do this or you can't do that, then it'll be applicable to, it'll, it'll be case law, for lack, lack of a better word, on future things. And if you wanna just hold it off till Mon, next Monday...
No, I don't wanna hold it off.
Then you can do it.
I, I don't know if I swallowed a Charlie pill today, or what. I'm like agreeing with that. I'm just saying, I, I think it could be for this bill and any other bills going forward. I think that that can be, that, that's gonna be my motion. Did you already make a motion?
No, I didn't.
No, I did not make it.
Not this.
But, so, I'll second your motion, we'll, we'll move on. I, I think, Bob, I, I think the, the question is, is drawn from...
Well, I agree, all I'm trying to do is avoid an open meeting law complaint.
Right.
We get enough, we, there's somebody that, every town in the southeastern Massachusetts puts in open meeting law complaints. I just, I'm just trying to stave off an open meeting law complaint, so all I'm trying to do, I agree wholeheartedly that this should go to the DOR.
Yeah, I see, but I, I think that we're firmly within the, the point of discussion that's on the agenda. The agenda, we had a discussion, now we, we've come with an outcome. We wanna get an opinion from DOR.
Your motion was?
To, to get a ruling or an opinion on this bill.
Okay.
What happened, and/or any other bills going forward.
From the DOR.
From the DOR, yeah.
And you seconded it, Chuck? Motion made in seconding, discussion on the motion, here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Aye.
Yes, aye. Approve fire abatements for the month of August as submitted by the Fire Chief, which, I don't know where I am on the agenda.
I know, I'm so lost right now.
Somebody, somebody made me go out of auto.
Yep.
To Kimberly Fails Town Account, you are hereby notified to file an ambulance revenue adjustment. Calculated allowances for the month of August two thousand eighteen are made in specified schedule for ComStar in the aggregate amount of seventy thousand eight hundred dollars and thirty-seven cents. Write-offs named month of August two thousand eighteen are made as specific, as specified in the schedule for ComStar aggregate eleven thousand forty-five dollars fifty-four cents for a total contractual allowance and write-off of eighty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion made in seconding, discussion on the motion, here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved Board of Selectmen's minutes for August sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, and August twentieth, two thousand eighteen.
I'll make a motion.
Approve is read. Motion made in seconding, discussion on the motion, here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Towne Minister, report a small... Let's read it fast.
Okay, I informed the board earlier, lots of control surveys for the buildings of Tomorrow, it took Maya through OSHA. I got my procurement seminar, supplies and services, that's a third course, getting certified as a state-certified procurement officer. It's next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, just to look the board now. We got some information on South Main Street, on the bridge, they're gonna start, Etna is gonna start on or before October first. They're gonna keep lane closures to a minimum. I've asked Mary, I've asked them to share their growth information with Mary Brown. They're gonna do the staging at the Hathaway Park, they're gonna be doing it with a diving team, with a boat that's positioned on the river. I did meet with Surfhead today regarding three programs. One is the housing production program, the planning board has approved that. However, we're gonna need to have the Board of Selectmen approve that, so that'll be on a future agenda. They had, they will unsend the plan into the state for acceptance and certification, and then that opens up the town to receive certain grants that are within their jurisdiction. We also talked about the open space recreation plan. The town is gonna need to form a committee which will survey town and identify open space and recreation parcels in the community. They're gonna do a Survey Monkey to get public, like, what do you call it? Survey Monkey is, is the, is the, is the database program. But it's gonna be a survey available to residents over the web, over our website, to get information and public input on the process. The result of that will be a seven-year action plan, once again, once it's certified and approved, it opens us up to get other additional funds to grants such as get money for a full-time plan or a part-time conservation person. There's also another program, the municipal vulnerability plan. We're gonna be approaching that on a regional basis with Lakeview and Rochester. Once again, that's identifying hazards in the community, floods, sites, climate, et cetera. And once again, once it's approved, it fills with the obligation to, or allows us to apply for grants that we previously weren't able to apply for. I've been working with Ryan Traneian of Environmental Partners, we have an obligation to. There's an EPA filing that needs to be done, it's on stormwater discharge. It's called an MS four notification, has to be done by October first. I had a meeting with Ryan, Chuck, Michelle from Ryan's office, and Chris. So we're moving forward with that, we have the money and the budget to do that. So he's gonna be preparing that document on our behalf and submitting it before October first. The Harpers program, we're moving ahead with that. We need to bring the payroll period, in order for the program to work properly, we need to sort of revise the way we do our payroll currently. It, it, I know that what we're gonna try to do, the payroll period is gonna run from Thursday to Wednesday, it's gonna be biweekly. During the initial payroll period, we're gonna be short two days, and those days will be made up in a subsequent pay period. What it's gonna do is, essentially, right now, we're, the last two days of the pay period, Thursday and Friday, the department heads have to speculate as to whether or not the person is gonna be there. And, you know, you fill them in, and then they call in sick that day, or they take a personal day the next day. By bringing this into line with the Thursday to Wednesday biweekly schedule, we're still gonna pay on the same day, everything else is exactly the same. What it does, it allows us to get actual accruals versus estimated accruals. Because once, the way we're doing it now, if somebody calls in sick, you have to go back after the fact and correct that through the payroll and through the treasury, through our records. And this way, once we're in the Harper system, everything will be an actual, you know, payroll accrual as well as the payroll itself. The one thing that we do need to do is, we're gonna have to go before the unions and just, it's gonna be more of an impact bargaining thing. We're just gonna sit down with them and explain to them what we're trying to do. We're gonna close, the payroll period will be for this, because October is a three payroll month. We're gonna be closing the payroll period on Wednesday, October twenty-fourth, instead of Friday, the twenty-sixth. And from that point forward, we'll be using actual time for sick vacation, personal time for all employees within the payroll period. The one thing to note is, because it's, the three weeks are in there, there are gonna be two short days that are gonna be made up at the next payroll, but there's also the third weekend there, which is minimizes the number of deductions because it's, the other two are offset by that, so. I just wanted the board to know that's what we're trying to do, and we're trying to basically line this up so that we can implement the Harper's payroll system. I don't know if Kenny has anything else to comment on that.
You look confused.
No, you're gonna need to impact bargain that before you do anything.
Yes, I'm, we're aware of that, I actually have a letter going out to the union. We're gonna give them the notice, we're telling them when we're gonna implement the change in the, the plan. We, we've been informally talking it a little bit, but I, I don't know how the unions are gonna react to that. Nothing's changing in terms of the payroll period, people are still gonna get their checks on Wednesday. It's just that we're gonna, we're gonna have a different date to open the payroll and then to close it so that we're using actual, not estimated, for the final Thursday and Fridays of the month.
Right, which is truly important when we're going to a time clock type system because people need to be clocking in and clocking out. And if we're needing to estimate, say, a Friday payroll because we have processing issues for a Monday holiday, it's just not going to give us the actual data that we need in order to streamline the process. So it's really, a big part of this is driven by the fact that department heads don't like signing off on a timesheet that they really don't know what happened on that Friday, or sometimes even the Thursday, depending on when holidays fall, that type of thing, snowstorms. We've had all kinds of issues as to not having enough time to really get actual information to process the payroll. And by integrating time clock and requests for time off and so forth, if that's all gonna be integrated, we really need to have the...
It's gonna be a one-time thing too, it's just, you know, it's just, it's gonna be, it's gonna require them to process the payroll differently. But the payroll is still gonna be, your check, you're still gonna get on Wednesday, there's no other change other than just during this one payroll period, we're gonna make an adjustment so that we can get onto that schedule.
Ken's down.
I just wanted the board to know that. I'm working with Bruce Willer on the constant aging freezer, they're putting a freezer box in, we do, have to do a pad. And I've been talking to Andy DiChamo about developing the specs and the documents, I talked to Bruce today about it, and he wants to move forward, the constant aging wants to move forward on it, so we're working to get that done before the snow flies. Public Power, the Electrical Energy Aggregation Legal Group has, they've agreed to an amendment. We agreed to it at our last meeting, we sent it in. There's gonna be a rate increase of ten point one-two-two to ten point four-three-zero kilowatts. It's still lower than the second lowest bidder that was in the bid process. The average six-hundred watt kilowatt per month bill will go up somewhere between a dollar fifty and a dollar eighty. They're asking us to post it on the town hall, on the website, in the in-town hall. They also have a mailing option if we wanna send out notice to everybody who is participating in program. But I'm not so sure for a dollar fifty whether that's gonna be, is that significant enough to cause people to get alarmed? We got two letters in from DCR regarding land that applies the Freetown State Forest. They are giving us a hundred-twenty-day notice, they also mentioned in the letters that the hundred-twenty-day notice can be waived if the town has no interest in the properties or in the process. So if the board, if the board's desire, I can put that on the next agenda, and we can have the board vote on it.
Okay.
They're laying lock there, wood, you know, nothing on them. I have an Eagle Scout who is interested in doing some work at the gazebo on the Common, and he's got a scope of work, and I was gonna have him come in at the next meeting and... and sort of give you an overview of what he's doing, and to seek approval of the board to allow him to do that. I have met with him, as well as with Mary Brown, to discuss the project. And I have a scope, which I can forward on to the board if you're interested prior to the meeting. That's it.
Did you inform the school transportation about the South Main Street branch?
I haven't done that yet.
Okay, they're gonna have to know.
You're expecting only not closure, one lane closure.
Right, I know, but still, it's always a way.
And they said it's gonna be, it's gonna be minimal.
The statement, the, the park, I believe, with the lane is-
Yeah, I hear that though, that they, they weren't going to be shutting the road down during transportation.
Oh, that's good.
That's the idea. We're hoping if they need to shut it down, it won't be between-
Six-thirty and nine-thirty, and one and four.
Exactly, we'll try to, we'll try to get it. I mean, they still have the kindergarten bus, do they do that, still have day?
No, it's a whole day.
So, one to four, six-thirty, nine-thirty, one to four.
Oh, no.
One thirty, it's actually one thirty. Okay, personnel board.
Alright.
Thank you, given the short reading.
First, the first item is the acceptance of letter resignation from Alicia Ferris as a part-time senior clerk, and signing the status form, she, she effective September twenty-one, twenty eighteen.
Didn't she start?
Yeah, she's only been there about three months. She's said in her letter she's resigning because of family issues.
Oh, Charlie, on that, she's still gonna be the clerk for the Finance Committee. She's keeping that one, but not the seal away.
I make motion to accept the change of status form and sign.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is a status change for Cheryl Estrella, Assistant Town Clerk, effective August nineteen, twenty eighteen.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Third item, status change for Eric Richard, Heavy Equipment Operator, effective October ten, twenty eighteen.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Third, status change for Kenneth Feld, list, good to have.
Kenneth the mechanic.
Yes, Kenneth the mechanic, move right along. Effective October twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is to appoint David Damash, American Disability Act Administrator, effective July one, twenty eighteen.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Third, lastly, pardon me, appoint Joyce Collins-Ruffey as an election worker, effective August thirty-one, twenty eighteen.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, sec, uh, let me second. I was gonna second.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion to adjourn?
No discussion.
Hearing, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, board of members, meeting is adjourned.